Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025.
The, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the Committee of the Hall meeting for Wednesday, April the 23rd, 2025. The, uh...
Thank you. The, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report, AD 2025-02, CAO Clerks Department work plan for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the focus of the 2025 in the Clerks and CAO Department will be policies. So, we have a very big number of policies that need to be updated as well as created, as well as we've been meeting with the archivist, Alan McDonald, and South Glengarry on working on records retention. Because all of our documents, I wouldn't even say most, but all of our documents are now electronic, it does change some of the retention policies when it comes to, normally some things are kept only for a certain number of years, but now that they're digitally kept, that whether or not we want to keep them indefinitely. So, that was some of the discussions we've had with South Glengarry, myself and Jen, I met with them, as well as with Alan, and so we'll be bringing the retention policy to council to be, like, re-approved, and then also be having Alan sort of look through our records that we have at the actual archives. We have reduced the amount that we send there because everything is now digital. The other thing that we've started working on, Jen and I, is actually the 2026 elections. So, we have some training that's coming up, and Elections Ontario was actually taken over from MPAC the list. Our hope is, and one of the questions that was asked when we had our first meeting with Elections Ontario, was whether or not the updates that were done during the provincial election would be then on our list. We did not receive the answer yes. However, we will be starting very soon in putting through any deaths that we have. We do, as a municipality, keep track of all the death, the death registries, so that was, will be something we start to review now, and then we'll, we'll be working on looking at updates from there, and maybe some cross-referencing between the information we have through the MPAC system to Elections Ontario, and then to start to do that. We'll be looking at communications when, in 2026, when it comes to making sure that people go on and check to see that their addresses are updated. We'll probably do a little contest, we've been talking about the Clerks Department across SDG at the lower tier level, of doing something together, and we were, we were asked to be challenged for the number of voters that we get, but because we're a word system, we, we decided because we wouldn't be able to win that we wouldn't participate in that challenge. So, the other thing that we are working on across the lower tiers is the insurance broker, RFP. So, we've been using the same insurance broker for a number of decades here. Seems as though it's been across the same, across the board, so we'll be looking at that. The broker does not mean we need to necessarily change the insurance provider that we have, because we do use different providers than other municipalities in the lower tier, so that will be coming to council within the next couple of months. I believe Crystal Lebrun from South Dundas had taken the reins on doing the first round of that. And then, ongoing legal, which is always something that's fun for us to deal with in the CAO Clerks Department. If there's any questions, I'll certainly take them.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments at this point? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, with the voters' list being pulled out of MPAC's hands, is that going to make the voters' list better or worse?
To you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that yet, Deputy Mayor Williams. I would hope, I would hope it would be better, and again, that was sort of what was asked to Elections Ontario, was we just all voted in the provincial election, and I know for myself, I had to register, and my hope would be that when I go into Elections Ontario, that I check myself, that I'm here in, in North Glengarry, right? So, that's the hope, that everything's there. We try our best to update that list as we, as we go. The issue with MPAC was that it seems, seemed as though, and we heard from residents as we took people at our voting stations and people who called in once they got their cards, was, "I've changed this three or four times, why is it not updated?" So, our hope is, is that we do get a list that is updated, because it was based on the Elections Ontario list originally. So, again, we have the MPAC data through the Taxation Department, so hopefully we'll do some cross-referencing with that and see where we end up. But our hope would be, and again, that's sort of not unlike some of the elections we're running through now, is that it is, it is the responsibility of the voter to, to check, right? So, just to get that information out early to people and then maybe have a little contest or something to see if they can get everything working really well, so...
So, we'll be advertising that, that people need to do their own checking?
Yeah, so, once we get into the actual election year, which is, say, 12 months from now-ish, we'll start to sort of turn on some of that information. We're, we're going to do a countywide sort of communications plan when it comes to a lot of those things, maybe do some, you know, reels or social media, maybe some drop, mail drops, things like that, just to get people involved in the election. It also depends on how many people, how many seats are rerun, right? So, if we, you know, depending on what seats, if we have a mayor or deputy mayor or councillor at large, it does increase the amount of, you know, traction we get in certain areas, so we'll see how that kind of goes.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, subsequent. I'm glad to see that the, the Staff Code of Conduct and the Council Code of Conduct are policies that are being worked on, that's, that's good to see. Does the purple mean finished?
That's when it will be finished.
I see, okay. What about conflict of interest policy? I think we talked about that.
Yeah, so I think we may integrate that into the Code of Conduct as well.
Yep.
In some of the research I've done, that seems to be what, what looks like it, it, that works. It's within the Code of Conduct because there is the Conflict of Interest Act, right?
Okay, so it'll be embedded?
So, embedded in that. Some of the research I was doing at the, at the upper tier levels, some of the lower tiers, some of the big, bigger cities have done some work on that. It looked like that was what was working, and so that conflict of interest will also be included as well, the staff policy level is, as well, so...
Excellent, thank you. Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, thanks for your report. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you. Moving on to Community Services Department, CS 2025-07, Community Services 2025 Departmental Work Plan Update. Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report BP 2025-11, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts Part Lot Control by Law Number 13 2025, and that by law 13-2025 be read first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 23rd day of April 2025.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to provide council with an update on some of the activities that have taken place in the Community Services Department over the last few months, and our intended activities throughout the coming year, I prepared a bit of a summary. So, to start, in looking under our administration side of the department, one of our focuses have been with the booking software, and looking at opportunities to find efficiencies with how we are accepting bookings and rentals and requests to access our facilities, as it relates to program registrations, invoicing, and integration with the township's finance system. So, one of the efficiencies we've found is with our spring programming, we've been able to offer more opportunities to register online for programming, as opposed to have to attend a physical site where people can pay in person. So, we've found the ability through the booking software to open up more of the system for online registration, which has been a win for the community. In addition to that, we will be looking at ways to integrate, the ways for the public to book facility, facility rentals online going forward. Currently, members of the public have to call or email one of our staff members and often have questions or inquiries about, you know, our facilities, how many tables are there, what is the setup opportunities. So, we really want to prepare a guide to feature what our facilities are equipped with and answer a lot of those questions in advance, so that members of the public can actually go on and put their request through the booking system and eliminate kind of the middleman having to tailor to a lot of those questions. So, just looking for some of those efficiencies within the department. In terms of capital projects, the Community Services Department had three capital projects approved for 2025, the first being the Maxville Library Lighting Project. So, we are hoping to begin the project in Q3 in consultation with library staff and the fire department. The Maxville sign, as presented to council at the last council meeting, is in its final stages with the final sign to come back to council for, for official approval before moving forward with that project, but we do expect to hopefully have completion by July of 2025. The North Glengarry stage has been ordered and is currently being constructed. It is expected to arrive by the end of May. So, great timing and alignment with the upcoming events this summer. Otherwise, there are also two major deliverables this year for the department, the first being the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan. So, this has been on our radar with the Economic Development Officer to take the information prepared in the commercial gap analysis, consultations with community partners, as well as external public consultation to put all of that information together and determine our economic development strategic priorities going forward. And in addition to that, the second deliverable is the Parks and Recreation Action Plan, which will be coming back to council before the end of Q2 for review. In addition, for staffing, over the summer months, the township will be bringing on a student as a recreation and special event summer student, that'll help assist with programming, community events, as well as some administrative functions. But in addition to that, later this summer, the department is looking to do an analysis of staffing within the Recreation Department to really look at schedules, the, the type of position, so whether it's a seasonal position or part-time, and the current schedule, to see if there's better models that we could adopt in the department to find some efficiencies with our staffing as well. So, that's expected to take place later this summer. Our tree planting efforts continue throughout the Township of North Glengarry. We are continuing to work closely with the Raisin Region Conservation Authority. We'll be having their annual tree giveaway on May 2nd at Island Park. In addition to that, there are a few other efforts taking place this year, and we are continuing to look for active sites for tree planting in areas such as Dal Keith and Maxville and across, across the township, as well as in partnership with the South Nation Conservation Authority. For committees and working group activities, the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee has met twice so far in 2025. Major activities include the review and approval of the 2025 Community Grant Program applications, as well as a review and revision to the evaluation process through the development of a scoring grid. So, this is something that we're eager to launch and apply to the next round of the Community Grant Program for 2026. The Committee also continues to conduct research into properties eligible for heritage designation in 2025. The Community Development Committee has also met twice so far, continuing to discuss new and possible development activities across North Glengarry and other relevant economic development updates. In addition, the Municipal Recreation Association Committee has also met once this year to review their operating and capital budgets for the year. Upcoming events and programming, the Boys and Girls Club will be resuming their activities at Island Park this summer, so we're happy to partner with them on that initiative and see them return for their summer day camp. Canada Day activities are well underway for planning. Fireworks have been ordered and celebration dates have been finalized with the respective Recreation Associations who are participating. The Meet Me on Main Street planning is also well underway. So, what we're doing is we're scheduling meetings currently with the community hosts and the Recreation Associations, or those who are interested in being involved in the planning of these events, to look to finalize entertainment, food and drink vendors, and then overall site planning. So, that's been going well and is well received by the respective community hosts. In updates for programming, the, the pool programming that we were able to bring forward last year has continued to go exceptionally well. We've been able to actually expand our aqua fit programming during the weekdays in the mornings, which we're seeing classes completely full, which is exciting to see. We'll also be looking to finalize the summer pool schedule in the coming weeks with the goal of continuing to expand our daytime offerings. In terms of facility updates, the Maxville Sports Complex has received its ice resurfacer that was ordered last year, so it has arrived, and training happened earlier this spring with staff, so the machine will be fully rolled out in the fall for the fall ice season. The ice will be coming out in Maxville on April 28th, so that's coming up next week. And then, in terms of other updates at, at that arena, so we will have staff completing some regular maintenance, including some painting and updating in the hall at the arena, some field maintenance and yard work, in addition to a review of our HVAC system and the actual placement of it. We had some issues over the winter with some ice buildup due to it just sitting on the ground, so we're looking to see if there's other, other opportunities for restructuring it.
Just gonna, just go ahead, do you have a question right now? Yes, thanks, just so I don't lose track of it. With regards to the HVAC system, because that was just installed, like, not last year, I think maybe the year before, and so, if it has to be moved, I, that must be a big deal, and is the company who installed it gonna take responsibility for that?
So, staff, do you want to go back and do a bit, a bit of analysis on the actual placement and what caused the issues over the winter months to, to result in the ice buildup? There could be other pieces involved to help prevent the snow from getting into it that we may want to, you know, identify ourselves. So, there will be some work this summer to really assess what the actual problem is before any movement is made on it, but I would certainly hope that, yes, if there were better opportunities to place it in a different location to avoid these issues, that that would be something we take back to the, to the provider for their insights as well in contribution.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the ice removal at the Glengarry Sports Palace was completed as of April 15th, so now we're prepping for summer season at the GSP and the surrounding ball fields and area, so there will be some field maintenance as well at the, the GSP field this summer due to some poor field conditions and large holes. At Island Park, in 2024, the Community Services Department purchased multiple AEDs to be placed at various fields and outdoor recreation areas across North Glengarry. So, during the winter months, they were stored indoors to enable staff to continue to do their regular checks on the devices and keep them secure, but they will be returned to the park locations within the coming weeks, that being at Island Park, Dundee again, Maxville, and Lochille Fields.
I'll just stop you there, councillor Massey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. AEDs, what's that mean?
Automated Defibrillator, I'm saying that out of order.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I was wondering what it was, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Something that Dwayne said she would never use on you. Go ahead, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in addition, other updates at Island Park, so while we await the results of the Ontario Trillion Foundation Grant, we will be looking to do some interim repair efforts to the tennis court, just to help kind of sand and patch over the cracks, once again, in the interim of hopefully receiving that funding through the Ontario Trillion Foundation Grant that we'd applied for. For the Tim Hortons Dome, again, we continue to provide well-received programming over the winter months, including the running program, women's volleyball, and soccer clinics, and we'll have our annual sprinkler system inspection taking place on May 6. Under the Economic Development Portfolio, we were eager to launch in April a new business development e-newsletter, which we've launched as a platform for local businesses and organizations and overall general members of the community to have some updates on upcoming business tailored events, networking, training opportunities, grant opportunities, and it's also an opportunity for the township to feature some of our grant programming that we have available and highlight some of our success stories through that platform. So, the first edition of the newsletter went out last month and has been well received. The Community Improvement Plan and Regional Incentives Program continues to be successful. Recently, actually, I was read in the, the media today, there was an announcement about the two North Glengarry businesses who were selected to receive funding as part of the Regional Incentives Program, so great news for the area of North Glengarry and these businesses and the funding that's available to support these initiatives. The Economic Development Officer will be attending the Ontario East Municipal Conference as a guest speaker in the fall. She, along with Lindsay Parisian, were selected to speak about their successful experiences with designated heritage properties, so that'll be a great opportunity to feature some of the success stories within North Glengarry at that event. Finally, the Community Information Guide remains a priority for the Economic Development Officer and staff, so we continue to work towards that with a goal to bring a draft to council in Q3. In addition, you'll find within the report a summary of other meetings and training opportunities that have taken place for staff so far this year and into the upcoming months, but overall, it's been a busy but exciting year for, year so far for the, it feels like a year, for the Community Services Department. As a subject of any questions, this is my report.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, going back to the booking software program, it seems like we, we, it comes back to council every year or so, or something, it seems that we talked about that many times, like with Ann, and she had different implement. So, is the one that we implemented a couple of years ago, did it actually, did it ever work, or you need, this is to, do we have one now, or?
Yep, so we do have, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have a, a booking system in place. My understanding is it's been in place for the last few years.
Yeah.
It's, it's been here for a while, so it does work well, and we do have quite a bit of features within it. So, the goal of the report was just to indicate that I think there's probably other opportunities within it that we haven't fully tapped into, so to reach its full potential, staff are continuing to explore that.
Okay. I, I was wondering if the other one was never implemented.
Yes, well, thank you. Go ahead, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on that, it's that same line or whatever. I think it's a great idea if we can move towards having the community be able to book the facilities themselves, because I hear that all the time or whatever, that people say, "It'd be so nice if I could just book it myself" or whatever, and not didn't have to call somebody. So, if, if we can make that happen, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, councillor Manley.
A quick question on that one, Stephanie. For all the things that we add on to it, are we paying them more? Like, do we get an additional fee if we use another feature on it, or is it all included automatically?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, we're very fortunate that we have a, a program or a package that encompasses all of these features. It's just a matter of tapping into them.
Okay. Good. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Actually, I'm gonna, Brian, can I get you to reread the motion? You read the motion from the planning meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, nobody noticed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report, CS 2025-07, Community Services 2025 Departmental Work Plan Update for information purposes only.
I wanted to let it go, but councillor Manley said no, so... All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to Treasury Department, TR 2025-08, First Quarter Variance Report. Councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Madden, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report, TR 2025-08, First Quarter Variance Report for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Zoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have analyzed the budget as of March 31st, 2025, and have prepared a variance report based on this. The report attached provides the budgets, the actuals, as well as the variance for each item. Each director provided comments on the items that were over the 25% variance threshold. As it was only the first quarter, there have been no significant impacts to the budget to date. The overall variances for the township was 21% in comparison to 29% after the first quarter in 2024. This does include revenue expenses and capital projects as a whole. Overall, two trends that were observed were an increase in insurance and an increase in expenses related to winter maintenance. Expenses exceeded the overall amount budgeted for insurance in 2025. The overage did include an additional invoice received for a reevaluation to the township's fleet, however. As the CAO mentioned, a joint tender is being prepared with the local municipalities for insurance broker services for the coming year. This should provide a better estimate prior to the 2026 budget. Winter maintenance activities, including contracted snow clearing and overtime, were higher due to the winter events we experienced earlier this year. This largely impacted the public works budget, and it had a more minimal impact on the Community Services budget as snow removal was required for facilities such as the dome and the GSP. The report highlights the top three variances by percentage for each department. An explanation was provided by each director for why the item was over the threshold. The line items for conferences and memberships was over the 25% threshold for most departments, as these expenses are not incurred steadily throughout the year, but are usually paid for at the beginning. Similarly, utility costs were close to that or over the 25% threshold. This expense also varies throughout the year and tends to be higher in the winter due to heating costs. Staff will continue to monitor the budget, ensure the expenses and revenue are being allocated properly, and a second quarter variance report will be brought after June. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the, on the snow budget, are we currently over our entire snow budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of overtime or in terms of contracted services?
Just, yeah, all of it.
All of it?
Yeah.
We are close in many areas. I will be reassessing the overtime for roads as, depending on how it's incurred for bank time, it is allocated to the overtime budget, but if they take it as time off in lieu of pay, then it can be moved back to the regular budget. So, that will provide a little bit of breathing room for the upcoming winter season at the end of the year.
Just no snow, that's all we need, no snow. Any, go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, Zoe, and I'm gonna say, either of you might answer this. The reassessment on fleet, how are we letting them get away with that? They knew what they were quoting. Why are they reassessing our fleet all of a sudden? We haven't made any significant changes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Have to look at the paperwork again. I don't take care of the insurance. However, I believe it was the addition to the fleet. So, the ice resurfacer, the pickup truck, and I believe there was a few items at the end of last year that were not captured.
Okay, 'cause that's, they went pretty big on that.
No, sorry, that invoice was not the difference.
Okay.
It, it was not the entire difference, it was just included in the overage.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed.
And we'll move on to TR 2025-09, Finance Department, 2025 Q1 Work Plan. Councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry receives report, TR 2025-09, Finance Department, 2025 Q1 Work Plan Update for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Motion is carried, none opposed. And we'll move on to TR 2025-09, Finance Department, 2025 Q1 Work Plan. Councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry receives report, TR 2025-09, Finance Department, 2025 Q1 Work Plan Update for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. On the, on the snow budget, are we currently over our entire snow budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of overtime or in terms of contracted services?
Just, yeah, all of it.
All of it?
Yeah.
We are close in many areas. I will be reassessing the overtime for roads as, depending on how it's incurred for bank time, it is allocated to the overtime budget, but if they take it as time off in lieu of pay, then it can be moved back to the regular budget. So, that will provide a little bit of breathing room for the upcoming winter season at the end of the year.
Just no snow, that's all we need, no snow. Any, go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, Zoe, and I'm gonna say, either of you might answer this. The reassessment on fleet, how are we letting them get away with that? They knew what they were quoting. Why are they reassessing our fleet all of a sudden? We haven't made any significant changes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Have to look at the paperwork again. I don't take care
Enable staff to continue to do their regular checks on the devices and keep them secure, but they will be returned to the park locations within the coming weeks, that being at Island Park, Dundee again, Maxville, and Lockheal Fields.
I'll just stop you there, Councilor Massey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. AADs, what's that mean?
Automated Defibrillator, I'm saying that in order.
Okay, I was wondering what it was, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Something that Dwayne said she would never use on you. Go ahead, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in addition, other updates at Island Park. So while we await the results of the Ontario Trillion Foundation Grant, we will be looking to do some interim repair efforts to the tennis court just to help kind of sand and patch over the cracks, once again, in the interim of hopefully receiving that funding through the Ontario Trillion Foundation Grant that we'd applied for. For the Tim Hortons Dome, again, we continue to provide well-received programming over the winter months, including the running program, women's volleyball, and soccer clinics, and we'll have our annual sprinkler system inspection taking place on May 6. Under the economic development portfolio, we were eager to launch in April a new business development e-newsletter, which we've launched as a platform for local businesses and organizations and overall general members of the community to have some updates on upcoming business tailored events, networking, training opportunities, grant opportunities, and it's also an opportunity for the township to feature some of our grant programming that we have available and highlight some of our success stories through that platform. So the first edition of the newsletter went out last month and has been well-received. The Community Improvement Plan and Regional Incentives Program continues to be successful. Recently, actually, I was read in the media today, there was an announcement about the two North Glengarry businesses who were selected to receive funding as part of the Regional Incentives Program, so great news for the area of North Glengarry and these businesses and the funding that's available to support these initiatives. The Economic Development Officer will be attending the Ontario East Municipal Conference as a guest speaker in the fall. She, along with Lindsay Parisian, were selected to speak about their successful experiences with designated heritage properties, so that'll be a great opportunity to feature some of the success stories within North Glengarry at that event. Finally, the Community Information Guide remains a priority for the Economic Development Officer and staff, so we continue to work towards that with a goal to bring a draft to council in Q3. In addition, you'll find within the report a summary of other meetings and training opportunities that have taken place for staff so far this year and into the upcoming months. But overall, it's been a busy but exciting year for, year so far for the, it feels like a year, for the Community Services Department, so subject to any questions. This is my report.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, going back to the booking software program, it seems like we, we, it comes back to council every year or so or something, things that we talked about that many times, like with Ann and she had different implement. So is the one that we implemented a couple of years ago, did it actually, did it ever work, or really, this is to, do we have one now, or?
Yep, so we do have, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have a booking system in place. My understanding is it's been in place for the last few years.
Yeah.
It's been here for a while, so it does work well, and we do have quite a bit of features within it, so the goal of the report was just to indicate that I think there's probably other opportunities within it that we haven't fully tapped into, so to reach its full potential, staffer continue to explore that.
I was wondering if the other one was never implemented.
Yes, well, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on that, it's that same line or whatever, I think it's a great idea if we can move towards having the community be able to book the facilities themselves, because I hear that all the time or whatever, that people say, "It'd be so nice if I could just book it myself" or whatever, and not didn't have to call somebody. So if we can make that happen, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Manley.
Quick question on that one, Stephanie. For all the things that we add on to it, are we paying them more? Like, do we get an additional fee if we use another feature on it, or is it all included automatically?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we're very fortunate that we have a program or a package that encompasses all of these features. It's just a matter of tapping into them.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Actually, I'm gonna, Brian, can I get you to reread the motion? You read the motion from the planning meeting, the, yeah.
I was gonna say, nobody noticed.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report CS 2025-07, Community Services 2025, Departmental Work Plan Update for information purposes only.
I wanted to let it go, but Councilor Manley said no, so. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to Treasury Department, TR 2025-08, First Quarter Variance Report, Councilor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Madden, that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report TR 2025-08, First Quarter Variance Report for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have analyzed the budget as of March 31, 2025, and have prepared a variance report based on this. The report attached provides the budgets, the actuals, as well as the variance for each item. Each director provided comments on the items that were over the 25% variance threshold. As it was only the first quarter, there have been no significant impacts to the budget to date. The overall variances for the township was 21% in comparison to 29% after the first quarter in 2024. This does include revenue expenses and capital projects as a whole. Overall, two trends that were observed were an increase in insurance and an increase in expenses related to winter maintenance. Expenses exceeded the overall amount budgeted for insurance in 2025. The overage did include an additional invoice received for reevaluation to the township's fleet, however. As the CIO mentioned, a joint tender is being prepared with the local municipalities for insurance broker services for the coming year. This should provide a better estimate prior to the 2026 budget. Winter maintenance activities, including contracted snow clearing and overtime, were higher due to the winter events we experienced earlier this year. This largely impacted the public works budget, and had a more minimal impact on the community services budget as snow removal was required for facilities such as the dome and the GSP. The report highlights the top three variances by percentage for each department. An explanation was provided by each director for why the item was over the threshold. The line items for conferences and memberships was over the 25% threshold for most departments as these expenses are not incurred steadily throughout the year, but are usually paid for at the beginning. Similarly, utility costs were close to that or over the 25% threshold. This expense also varies throughout the year and tends to be higher in the winter due to heating costs. Staff will continue to monitor the budget, ensure the expenses and revenue are being allocated properly, and a second quarter variance report will be brought after June. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the, on the snow budget, are we currently over our entire snow budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of overtime or in terms of contracted services?
Just, yeah, all of it.
All of it?
Yeah.
We are close in many areas. I will be reassessing the overtime for roads as, depending on how it's incurred for bank time, it is allocated to the overtime budget, but if they take it as time off in lieu of pay, then it can be moved back to the regular budget. So that will provide a little bit of breathing room for the upcoming winter season at the end of the year.
Just no snow, that's all we need, no snow. Any, go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, Zoe, and I'm gonna say either of you might answer this. The reassessment on fleet, how are we letting them get away with that? They knew what they were quoting. Why are they reassessing our fleet all of a sudden? We haven't made any significant changes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Have to look at the paperwork again. I don't take care of the insurance. However, I believe it was the addition to the fleet. So the ice resurfacer, the pickup truck, and I believe there was a few items at the end of last year that were not captured.
Okay. Because that's, they went pretty big on that.
No, sorry, that invoice was not the difference.
Okay.
It was not the entire difference, it was just included in the overage.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. And we'll move on to TR 2025-09, Finance Department 2025 Q1 Work Plan, Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Martin, that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receives report TR 2025-09, Finance Department 2025 Q1 Work Plan Update for information purposes.
Okay, thank you, Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have continued to focus on the department's regular responsibilities, which include accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, and utility billing. We had two new staff members join the department in late 2024, and they've been doing very well. We'll be looking for training opportunities in 2025 and 2026 to continue expanding on their knowledge and ensure they're comfortable and efficient in their role. The 2024 year-end audit is currently underway. Staff have been working closely with the auditors to provide the requested documents. Staff are hopeful that the audit will be completed by the end of June with a presentation to council in July or August, depending on the auditor's responsibility, or availability, sorry. The first installment for property taxes are due on July 31. The property tax bills are normally mailed out in mid-June. Staff have been exploring several options in case of another Canada post-mail strike, including other courier services to minimize the impact. The next upcoming tax sale is scheduled for June 11. This sale will be advertised in the coming weeks and final notices will be sent to the interested parties. Staff have also begun reviewing lists of properties and severe arrears, and will be looking to send out notices in the coming months. This will be a focus in the second quarter. Staff continue to work on the implementation of the payroll system. Once implemented, the system will allow for more efficiency and improved access to staff to access their own records. It will allow staff to access their pay stubs and request time off. This system also has the capacity to integrate HR functions such as hiring, training, and policy sign-offs. The Finance Department has begun to work on both the 2025 Asset Management Plan Update as well as the 2026 Water Financial Plan. The update to the Asset Management Plan is due by July 1 of this year. The update will include proposed levels of service, lifecycle management, and financial strategy. Once completed, staff will bring the updated report to council for approval. A six-year financial plan is required for licensing the drinking water system. The next plan is due by 2026. Staff are anticipating completion by early fall of 2025. The Finance Department will work together with the Public Works Department and the Water Works Compliance Officer to ensure that a useful and accurate plan is developed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to the tax sales, and, let's see if I can get through this without coughing. Tax sales and tax arrears. Now, I, you may need to come back with this information, I'm just curious where we're at with tax sales in terms of, given the, the economic hard ti, hard times at the moment, are we seeing an increase in tax sales over the last, you know, number of years? Maybe you could kind of bring that info forward for the next meeting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We actually have been reviewing it recently. I wouldn't say there's an increase. A tax sale is really the final step, so we do our best to work with landowners in advance to come up with a payment plan. I wouldn't say there's been an increase in tax sales.
No.
They've been relatively stable. The outstanding list is, is rather short for what actually could be registered. We do have a second tax sale already in the works, but for the most part, we try to work with them before it gets to that stage.
Okay, well, that's good news. And then in terms of overall tax arrears, how is that trending?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd have to look into that further. Overall, the total amount has remained relatively stable, though we do have a rather significantly large tax sale that we're hoping to have at the end of this year if the taxes are not collected by there, which would significantly bring down the liability.
Okay. I wouldn't mind just kind of seeing the trend on next time.
I can put that together.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we had talked about this before on the tax sale and the, the address that is on, that's listed on the tax sale. It's the property, it's the roll number that's listed, right?
It's the roll number.
And no one really knows what that is. Could we do the roll number plus an actual?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. One, there is a civic address, it is included. It's just unfortunate, in the last three we've had, they did not actually have a civic number, they were just parcels of land.
Okay.
So we do also attach a map. However, there's certain restrictions. I don't believe we can use Google Maps, so it becomes a little bit more vague in terms of mapping, but the upcoming tax sale does have a civic address.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Councilor Massey, no, she can't tell you what's coming out.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So regarding that, so if somebody out in the public would like to get information on that, the only way basically is to call the office. Is that the way to do it, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Because like Jeff, Councilor Manley said, there's no address, so we, we never see what's going on, or not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The information is posted online as well as in a package. The information is also usually published in the newspaper. It does have the location as well as who to contact, and it's myself, so they can always reach out if they require additional information. The entire package is available to purchase online or at the township office, and it includes all the information that they require to submit a bid.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to the Planning Department, B 2025-12, Work Plan 2025. Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number VP 2025-12, the Director of Building, Bylaw, and Planning, 2025, Work Plan for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm looking at Tim, he's not looking at me. Jacob!
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, as compared to the other work plans, as you can see, mine is pretty thin, so I have decided I'm not going to work very hard this year.
Again.
Telling you that right off the bat. All right, so a little wrap-up here in the Building Department. So as most of you know, the province came out with the new 2024 Ontario Building Code. There were a lot of changes. The ones that are affecting us the most here in North Glengarry are really the ones, well, they incorporated the farm building code in the Ontario Building Code, which does make sense, but it's mostly the changes in the, in the residential area. So some changes to guards and rails and stuff like that. Radon gas, I think we've discussed that at a previous meeting, so radon gas are now, radon gas protection is now a requirement in all the new buildings. Everything, like, most of the big changes, though, are coming a little bit with the planning, the official plan that changed also for secondary home within buildings. So as you know, in our new zoning bylaw amendment, it will permit for three dwelling units per property. So we will see a lot of accessory apartments, secondary home into existing buildings. So most of the changes for us are including that. So they've, they've let down a bit on the fire separations, they've changed a few, they changed a few things, so this will be the biggest changes for us with secondary units within existing buildings. Building permits, as of April 15, 2025, we've issued 32 building permits. In comparison with last year, we had issued 38 building permits, so we're, we're on par pretty much. As far as value goes, we've issued the Maxville Manor building permit, so our value for this year is a lot higher, but it's really just because of one permit. But it's very similar to last year, we are, last year too, at the beginning of the year, it was very slow. This year too, January, February was slow with construction. We are seeing more permits come in now for, especially for dwelling units. And I expect that when, when we do advertise our new zoning bylaw, secondary units within homes, like some people know, we, we're getting phone calls about it already. Right now, we're not permitting them because of our zoning bylaw, so I expect some more permits regarding accessory units to come soon. The administrative assistant is still issuing the letters for outstanding building permits, so everybody from 2015 to 2020, if you have an outstanding building permit, you should have received a letter. And again, as we've discussed before, this helps a lot when the properties are sold. So we have less and less issues with the lawyer checks in for a property, and they have five outstanding building permits, so it helps a lot for that because they have time to, to close their building permit before. Larger projects in the Building Department, so most of you probably seen the six-plex residential building on Bishop North, replacing the old vacant building. They're doing the foundations now, so that's moving along. As, as you know, it's two plus two plus two, all apartment building. The other, I guess, bigger apartment complex was the one in Maxville in the old St. Bernard School. So James has, he also pretty much finished the four other apartments in the gym, so the entire school is now pretty much finished. There's 14 apartments altogether. James, like, we've discussed it in the site plan, but James has some room to do some more buildings, so who knows what he's going to do next, but from what I heard, they're all rented out, so it's going really well for, for James. As I mentioned, we've issued the, the building permit for Maxville Manor. Site plan was approved, building permit was also approved. It was issued in advance for financing purposes with the government on their end. The last I, I heard, they were talking about late summer or fall to start with Phase 1, which is mostly infrastructure, the end, parking lot and whatnot that's going to be moved on the south side, but this should be going soon. And we're also meeting with a lot of people for, for potential development, so there's a lot of, of calls that are coming in now, so people know that also outside in the country now, we're permitting more than one home. So North Glengarry has a lot, especially north and east has a lot of agricultural lands, so we're getting a lot of calls about people wanting to put more homes and sever their homes and stuff like that, so we are seeing some activity with that, for sure. Bylaw enforcement, so again, biggest issue, dogs. We are having a lot of loose dogs in the township. Dog barking, dog loose, dog bite, whatever you want with dogs, we are getting them. We are, we are working on, again, the neighboring township for, for help when Todd is not there, we're still working on that. The kennels, we still plan on moving it in the, in the rear building. That'll help a lot, especially in the wintertime where right now the building is heated, but it's, it's more difficult to access, so in the rear it should be better, we'll have more room also. So that'll help for that, but definitely, yeah, we're looking for some, for some potential help in weekends and when the bylaw officer is off. Bylaw set fines, the AMS building, the AMS, sorry, the AMS bylaw, working very well, we will be implementing the AMS bylaw, so we have seen, so the bylaw officer is issuing some fines, not a lot, but some fines, it's very easy to issue fines with that one when they're like really black on white, and at some places, they, they should be higher, some, some places they should be lower because we're not issuing the fines because we, we find it's too high, so we're gonna adjust our fines and we're gonna add a couple of bylaws to, into the AMS bylaw to be able to, to work more with, with the people. Planning, so subdivisions, there's the alley subdivision, that's pretty much a goal, we're just waiting for a deposit, and he's ready to go to start working on the infrastructure for Phase 1 and 2. Servicing roads for these phases are all, everything's ready to go. The, I guess I can call it the Ledoussard subdivision now, which is the old IHA. I had a meeting with them this week, and so there has been some discussions about the higher buildings, eight, six, eight, and 10-story buildings, so I met with them Tuesday, and so we discussed different options for them. So they had presented their project as a whole, and that was not, like, it was just really an information presentation on what they planned to do. They're still, they still want to go ahead with that, it's, it's a nice project, but we've discussed ways for them to be able to start sooner without having to rezone the entire property. So, so what we may do is, we've discussed minor variances instead for a couple of phases where some are already facing the road, so they would just need a minor variance with the existing zoning bylaw that's currently there, so they don't have to rezone the entire property. It will give them time to, to maybe talk with the neighbors and figure out some, some other options, so they are, they're really, really good with communication, by the way, like if, if we need them, they're, like I've sent emails and the, the meeting is scheduled right away, and also with members of the public, I have transferred them some emails, they called back right away, and they, they, they sit down with the people, they're really good. So if some have concern with that, don't hesitate, send it to them, they're super good for that. And they, like, they listen to the people, like, like, you know, there was some agricultural activities, they're discussing different options, so they're really easy to work with. Should be a pretty, pretty good project, anyway. And again, the two other, I guess, future locations for subdivision in Maxville are also at very early stages in the preliminary design, but they're, they're in the works, they're being discussed, especially the one northeast, it's, I think it's, they're working on preliminary designs to do a draft plan to present to the county, so it should, should come along also. Zoning bylaw, so as you know, we have to redo our zoning bylaw, so ours still dates from 2000, when we merged all four zoning bylaws together, so it's comprehensive zoning bylaw, we have like Lockheal, Kenyon, Alexandria, and Maxville all together. They are, like, I'm gonna discuss this further when we present it, but there are gonna be some big changes in that bylaw, pretty much like all the other townships around, where they're like residential zones especially, you will have only three zones, where R1 will be up to three dwellings, R2 up to 10 dwellings, and then R4 is apartment buildings and everything more than that. So it's really going to be flexible with the amount of units you can put on your property. Again, yes, servicing, parking will all be evaluated, so it's not like a freebie for everything, but it's going to be a lot more flexible, for sure, so there will be discussions about that, definitely. Severances, so here, the, the township, we were pretty lucky at the last official plan, official plan changes, as where a lot of our agricultural properties were changed to rural, and the council also opted for like the, the two-plus-one severance, so we resetted the date to the 1st of January, January 2024. So all the lots that existed at, by that date were, again, eligible for severances if, if they could, if they had the lot area and lot frontage. And we are seeing the impact of that, like, as you can see, in 2024, like, the entire year, we did 22 severances, and for 2025, like, as of April 15, I just signed three more this morning, we're already up to 18 severances. So there's a lot of, of severances that are, of new lots that are being created, most of them being residential rural lots, so outside, outside the city, which is kind of, I think, the goal, council was aiming for, to create new, and it's, it's working because we're seeing a lot more of that, and the, the, like, the things, I'm seeing the people are, are, now that they know the date is January 24, it's not gonna happen for another, whatever, 10, 15, 20 years. So the lots that they're creating, they, they're kind of keeping in mind that it may happen again, so the lots are large, like five acres, three acres, they're not like little one-acre strip lots, it's, it's really, it's working well, the, the goal was to do that, and that's what we're seeing from, from people, especially in the rural area. The, nothing changed for agricultural, unfortunately, but we have less, like, a lot of, a lot of agricultural lands was changed rural here in the township, so we were lucky for that as compared to like Winchester area, well, it's all agricultural, so we're, we're, we're good with that, for sure. And, yeah, no, again, ongoing zoning amendments, sorry, ongoing bylaws, so we are, Peter Young presented the delegation bylaw. I'm going to talk a little bit more in the presentation after, but it's something that we want to present soon, so you will be, you will see that coming very soon, because we'll, we'll kind of need it for the, well, not that we're gonna need it, but we would use it for the Ledoussard subdivision, for like holding zones and stuff like that, where changes can be made quicker, like where it's just paperwork, where council wants to remove the hold. Everybody wants to remove the hold, but it's there, so you don't have to go through the whole process. The CIO could expedite the process, so it would help for that too, so anyway, we're gonna present that soon also. That's it for this report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Short on paper, but long on talk.
Huh?
Just kidding. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilor Madden.
Excuse me, just a thought, and I'll mention this to you guys, maybe if Jacob would come to Community Development just to give them an update on the, on the severances, because that's something that I think that group probably needs to be aware of, resetting the date and, you know, what can actually be done, because it's something that we've talked about a lot, but we really haven't talked about that aspect of it. So just a thought for our next meeting.
Good idea, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions or comments? It's good to see everything's moving forward pretty quickly, so good on you guys and keep up the good work. More, need more tax money.
Yep, so.
Oh, yep, go ahead. Is that on the same, oh, okay.
The link I sent you? No, no, there was the whole presentation. Can you go get it? Can you throw it on now? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, because if you like to hear me talk, I have like a super long presentation.
Yes.
Well, I guess I can. It would be easy to have all those slides.
What's that?
It is.
Yep.
Do you want to do the next one? We can figure that out.
Yep, we can do that, so I'll, I'll.
I'll go get a key, I'll just give it to her.
Okay, Angela coming back in, yeah. Okay, so we're going to move on to the Drinking Water Systems 2024 Annual Review. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm led by myself, signed by Councilor Massey, that the Committee of the Hall of the Township in North Glengarry receives report PW 202508 Drinking Water Systems 2024 Annual Review for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Angela.
A little more technical difficulties just for you. Well, while writing, for anyone who doesn't know, I am Angela Cullen. I'm with the Water Works Department in the, primarily working on compliance and coordination. So just as a gentle reminder, this is a presentation which is an overview of the key elements of the annual reports from the 2024 and an annual summary for the QMS. So please read or refer to the annual reports for more in-depth understanding. You should have been supplied with the reports for the Alexandria Drinking Water as well as the Glen Robertson Drinking Water System. And then there would have been a handout for the presentation. There you go, there's PowerPoint. So Glen Robertson Water Treatment and Distribution System. So just a quick summary and overview. This system is a small municipal residential drinking water system. It is now designated as a class one treatment and class one distribution. It services approximately 50 homes. It is a gutty well system, meaning groundwater under the direct influence of surface water. We use UV and chlorination for disinfection. Currently, there's no water shortages that we've noted in the system and there's been limited growth in the area, so limited expansion of the system. For permits and licensing, as Zoe alluded to earlier, we do have our municipal drinking water license renewal coming up in September 2025 with the permit expiring in March 2026, which is about six months after. In order to complete this process, we have to have an update of our financial plan, which Zoe alluded to earlier, which has to also be approved by council before submission. There's also the Drinking Water Works permit and the permit to take water, which is valid until 2035. For the flow summary, so the system, the flows from the 2024 period were similar to previous years. The allowable quantity to take from the well is 224 cubic meters per day. We had a maximum flow rate of 71.7 cubic meters and then an average daily flow of 21.4, which puts us at about 10% of our capacity. When we're talking about water loss for Glen Robertson, we're talking about water that's not accounted for through leaks or anywhere where the water's taken in the distribution before the customers are metered. It can also include faulty meters, age, damage and tampering. Currently, the system is about 11.1%, so within the industry standard. There's no concern for water loss currently. When it comes to monitoring and sampling, so there were no notable changes or observed quality changes in the raw, treated or distribution. Our current treatment is sufficient and able to treat the water quality that's currently available and we're able to meet all compliance issues. There was no adverse sampling in regards to our routine samples, which are weekly, in our quarterly samples or in any of our additional samples. On the right side, it just gives you a rough kind of timetable as to like when the samples are required. So for inorganic and organic sampling, it's only done once every three years. Fluoride and sodium is done once every five years. And the lead, there's a six month monitoring requirement and a three year sampling requirement because we're on a reduced sampling requirement. There's no regulatory changes at this point that we're aware of that could affect the sampling or monitoring. When it comes to the systems' significant expenses, in 2023, we started a meter exchange program. We are probably about 95% complete to date. This was contacted, this was contracted to one plumber and reliant on residential scheduling through the plumber. So it does require some follow-up to make sure that we are completed. The water treatment plant building expansion, this is an RFP that the Director of Public Works has been working on and it should be released in the near future. And the Singer valve removal. So this was an older piece of equipment that was in the water treatment plant. We noted some intermittent pressure issues and then we determined that it was being caused by the Singer valve. So we contracted Eastern Welding to come in, remove the unit completely because it was no longer required. Aquaholics was brought in and supplied the distribution and system pressure and the work was completed in eight and a half hours. For any major operational issues, so the treatment failures, the UV units, the only issues that were noted were related to maintenance. So anytime the UV failed, it was taken out of service, our backups were put in place and then we were able to kind of fix the issues. And it's the same with the chlorine system. There was no dosing loss. Anytime the pumps failed, we had our backup systems in place and operating. We have noted an increased issue in de-gassing on the suction line of the pumps, which is something we're working with different distributors to try to figure out and target what's going on to try to prevent the number of call-ups that we're getting in regards to that. When it comes to conformance, compliance, licensing, permitting and approval, we had our internal audit done in October. There's two minor non-conformances and five opportunities for improvement. All the issues were clerical in nature and evaluated for how well they would be, how relevant they would be to the actual aspect. Some of them, some of the issues have already been resolved and some of them were deemed to be not relevant. Our third-party accreditation, so our surveillance audit was completed in November. There was no non-conformances, one opportunity for improvement and one comment. The system accreditation has been maintained. We just renewed our three-year contract and we'll be having our accreditation audit later this year in November. When it comes to the ministry for compliance, we had our annual inspection in August. We had 100% risk ranking. There were no compliance issues or best management practices that were brought up and there was no adverse quality reports for the system. And then the multi-barrier approach for water treatment. We just completed our 36-month risk evaluation on the drinking water system. There were some minor clerical issues that needs to be updated, a few standard operating procedures that need to be created, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary or out of the blue. When it comes to the quality management system, some of the timelines weren't always adhered to, but we did complete all of the required, required meetings, which we'll talk about later. And then our target this year is to get everything back on track into the timelines that we set up. So they're more, the reviews are more impactful.
I'll just stop it there. Any questions on the Maxwell system?
Glen Robertson.
Sorry, Glen Robertson system. Just a question probably for Tim or Zoe. We have 50 hookups in, in Glen Robertson and I know we have a blended rate across the township, but would that even come close, does that come close to covering the cost of the Glen Robertson water system?
Through, Mr. Mayor. We'd have to look into it further, but my initial response would probably be no.
Okay.
However, we can, we can put that together and bring it back to council.
So, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, continue.
Now, on to the Alexandria Water Treatment and Distribution. Once again, just a quick overview. So Alexandria is a large municipal residential drinking water system. It's a class three treatment, class two distribution. Services approximately 1,500 in Alexandria and about 400 in Maxwell. Surface water treatment with the various treatment components as well as disinfection. There's two water storage facilities, one in Alexandria and one in Maxwell. There's minor growth, but a lot of the limited growth in the areas more on the wastewater side than it is on the water side. Once again, the permits and licensing, the way the permits and licensing works is that it has individual licenses, but everything is kind of glued together because Alexandria and Glen Robertson are run as one. So once again, the expiry is in March 2026 with the renewal date of September 2025. The financial plan will cover both sites, so it's a single plan. And then the permit to take water is valid until 2032. So for flow summary, Alexandria is a little bit different from Glen Robertson in that we have limits on the water that we take in on the raw side as well as what we can actually treat through the water plant, put out to the distribution. On the raw side, we're allowed to take in just over 5,600 cubic meters. Our maximum day that we pulled in in 2024 was 2,826 cubic meters with an average daily flow of around 19, 20 cubic meters, which puts us at 34.2% of our permits to take water, which is an increase from just, it's about 0.9% from the previous year. So there is a minor increase from the previous year. On the treated side, so what we send out to the drinking water system, we're allowed to produce 8,014 cubic meters per day. Our maximum day was 2,699 cubic meters with an average flow of 17.07, which puts us at a current system capacity of 21.3%, which once again is a minor increase from the previous year, it's a 0.2% increase. With the water loss, so water loss is attributed to leaks in the distribution before customer meters, hydrant usage with or without permission or faulty meters through age, damage or tampering. When we did the water loss in early 2025 for the previous year, we noted that Alexandria was about 40% loss with Maxwell about 50% loss from what's actually, from what our numbers are. And while this seems like a very large amount, Alexandria has improved from 11%. So we are down 11% from our previous audit, which was done in 2022. We are looking into our internal processes such as departments like the fire department that take water, but there's no, there's no tracking system currently. So I do think the numbers are slightly overinflated because we do have internal processes that are taking water and just not reporting it to us. In Alexandria, I think there are some smaller leaks. Maxwell, fairly new system, we shouldn't have as many leaks. It's just about determining where that water's going.
Okay, question, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the 50% in Maxwell given, I mean, it's not a reasonably new system, it's a new system. 50% is an alarming number, is it not?
Yep.
It is.
Yep.
So where could that water be going?
Through, Mr. Mayor. So if you remember, oh, actually, I think it's through. So in my previous report from our management system, we talked about our partnership with SDG and last year there was significant road reconstruction done through their contractors and we identified that there was a deficiencies in how the contractor that they were using was reporting their water usage. So the plan this year, because there is obviously County Road 22 project that's gonna proceed there, the plan this year is to actually put a physical meter on a hydrant, which SDG has volunteered to pay for, which is great, and they will meter their water that way. So there'll be a designated hydrant, that's where they'll pull from and we'll have the meter reading to be able to pull from. But we suspect that is where most of the water loss came from there. There's also some tightening up in the reporting that the, the gravel operations will do this year because they take from the booster station, which also, you know, doesn't have an automatic system. It's, we count the number of trucks. So a new process with the form in there should give us some tighter recording. But the, sort of what this process is about when we do the audits, we can see where the, the water loss is and then we can drill down and look into each of them.
Go ahead.
The, because I know that at the, at dead ends, you had, you would, you would flush the system occasionally. Is that still happening and how much water loss would something like that account for?
So those figures actually are in the water loss because they're actually tracked. So we have an estimate of how much we're actually flowing. So we know roughly how much water's flowing out and then the guys will allow, they'll tell me how often it's flowing for how long and we kind of estimate that. So it's already taken into the, into the fact for the water loss. Yep.
Okay, Councilor Massey.
Take your, Mr. Mayor. Also, I think, Tim, you mentioned in your report, the fire department, when they take water from a hydrant somewhere, is that calculated properly every time or?
Through, Mr. Mas. So the, the, I think the main problem that we've got with the fire department was, I think it was Angela that actually found it, was that the metering at the stations is not done correctly. So the, the, I think the paramedic section is metered, but when they originally put the station there, they didn't meter what's going into the, into the, the station itself with probably the logic back then being that, you know, it's part of the township, so why would we, but it matters for water loss, right? So that'll be a huge part of it. I believe the, the chief sends reports that most of us get with the, the amount of water used from hydrants. So we were originally thinking that it was accounted for, but that, you know, every time the truck pump it goes back to the, you know, station one and fills up, it wouldn't be, that water wouldn't be accounted for. So that's the next stage.
If my, but during a fire, like I've seen the trucks go to Alexandria and fill up at the end of the, near the molding thing, like the fill-up is right, so is that tracked, that water? I'm not talking about the station, I'm talking about the.
Some, some of it is.
Okay.
So depending on if I actually get the report, if I get the report, then it's included. When I don't, don't receive the reports, then it kind of gets lost.
Okay.
There was a request for documentation, but I didn't get a response from the fire department. So it's something we're working on. I met with the fire chief today. It's gonna be something we're working on this year to button it up, to get it a little bit tighter, to kind of bring that number down because I do think they are overinflated and they're probably one of our biggest water sources, like in the lost, like lost water.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I promise it only gets better from here, that was the worst part. Sampling and analysis, so similar to Glen Robertson, we noticed very little fluctuations and changes in the quality from the water from raw, treated to distribution. There's no concerns for the actual treatment process or meeting our compliance limits currently. The, we had two adverse samples during our routine sampling. One was on the treated water system and one was in the distribution, which I will be talking about a little bit later. There's, there was no adverse sampling for our quarterly samples and no issues on the additional sampling that was completed. You will notice because it is a larger system, we do the organic and inorganic sampling once every year. The lead program is the same idea where it's once every six months and then one sample every three years. Fluoride and sodium are five years, there was no issues. We do have some historical issues with seasonal fluctuations on the sodium. And depending on when we sample, that may or may not come into effect. So I think we did, we had an issue a couple of years ago in the wintertime and then in the summer it was fine, so. There's no upcoming change. There's no upcoming changes regulatory-wise in regards to that would change our sampling or analysis. When it comes to significant expenses for the Alexandria Water System, there's the North Glengarry Master Plan. This is a report for the overall infrastructure and planning. A portion of the hydraulic water modeling was completed, but this is only a small portion of the overall plan itself. The Director of the Public Works is currently working towards completion with EBB. The Dominion Water Street main, so this was replacement of four-inch cast iron pipe and up to six-inch PVC. The water main was replaced on Dominion Street between Garnish and Law Hill and then on Derby Street between Main and Dominion. It was completed in eight weeks over three phases. We had the bulk fill station installation, where we removed the existing hydrant in front of the old rear building and put in a bulk fill for transports and bulk water users. It's also, this was also done to help in regards to the water loss and water taking. So it takes the onus off allowing contractors to go off hydrants where we can't monitor them and forces them to like the one station where it's actually metered and we can wa, we can watch it and track it. So that should help in regards to the water audit. We had some plate, equipment replacements, the locating correlating equipment, chlorine system upgrades, and the infrastructure renewal, which is a budget, budget item that allows us to replace defective valves and hydrants on an ongoing basis to ensure that our infrastructure is being renewed on an annual basis. When it comes to operational issues, our coagulant tank, we noted in the last year, there was some sort of sedimentation that was built up in the bottom of the tank, which was reducing our available volume and quality of the coagulant itself. The isolation valves are also found to be defective. All defect, all the, all defective parts were repaired, and both tanks were clean in early twenty twenty-five, so this is no longer an ongoing issue. Our backwash process, we had some issues with one of our filters. It's determined to be a valve, and we're still, valve issue. We're still working with the manufacturer in regards to replacement of this unit. We had a chlorinator that failed after a full maintenance. The unit was replaced and put back in service. One of our low lift pumps is having some flow issues. It's unable to keep up with some of the processes when in operation. So it can maintain regular treatment flows, but as soon as we start doing deslедging or we start doing a backwash, the pump can't supply the actual water treatment plant. We're still troubleshooting and trying to rule out what the issues are. We have ruled out the valve operation. So it's something in the pump that we're going to have to look into. And then at the booster station, the hydro meter, we ended up finding some internal arcing issues during a routine inspection, and all components were replaced. When it comes to treatment processes, we had the coagulant dosing issues. Most issues were caused during maintenance, and once discovered, they were resolved, and the process was put back in, back in place. Disinfection, and we had a defect in the injection line. It took about nineteen hours to repair, well, to troubleshoot and then repair the actual line. So we were able to maintain the distribution through the water towers. And then we had some minor line failures in the, at the booster station, so for the chemical dosing. And when it came to water breaks for unplanned work, we had six water main breaks and two service line repairs. So knock, knock on wood so far. For the compliance portion of it, the internal auditing and the external auditing will be the exact same as Glenn Robertson because it is done as one full system. When it comes to compliance issues with the ministry, we had our annual inspection in August. We had a risk ranking of ninety-one percent. There were no, there was a non-compliance issue, so I apologize on that bullet point. We had two adverse water qualities. One was a low distribution residual that wasn't reported as per requirements. And then one was mislabeling of samples where our treated and our raw samples were mislabeled and backwards. So whenever the results came back, they came back adverse, and then resampling established that it was just, it was a mislabeling issue and not an actual quality issue. For non-compliances, we had the, that low residual wasn't reported as per requirement. And then there was some issues during the water main replacement project where some of the procedures, required procedures, weren't followed by staff. Two management practices, which were minor clerical issues. And then when it comes to the multi-barrier approach, Alexandria is scheduled to have its thirty-six month drinking water system risk assessment, so that should be completed in November twenty twenty-five. Our annual risk review should be completed in July twenty twenty-five. And then once again, we're working on the integration and management to meet the timelines, which we, we missed a couple this year, as you will see. So finally, hopefully finally, just a-
Go ahead, question?
Nope, sorry.
Just with regards to the two non-compliance issues. What, what, how is that dealt with in terms of addressing it with staff and then making sure, for example, it doesn't happen again? It, it, you know, we all took that water course where, you know, your life's on the line if your, if your compliance isn't covered off. So I'm asking the question from that perspective.
So for the, the low residual in the distribution, it was a newer operator that didn't report it into the forman. So we adjusted our forms to make sure that it clearly indicates that anything under a certain parameter has to be reported as soon as possible. All staff were put through training as well to ensure. We had a meeting to explain what it was and then explain the changes in the forms and why they have to be completed that way. And then it was the same for the water main construction. That is, it was a clerical error where they needed to use a specific analyzer to get an actual readout because there's a calculation that has to be done to make sure that there's not a huge chlorine drop. Like, we're allowed a certain chlorine drop over a twenty-four hour period. So it was more along that. So once again, it was training, documentation, changes, and staff identification.
Okay, thank you.
So for the drinking water system, as you're all aware, we have a quality man, drinking water quality management system. So this is just kind of a quick summary of items that are done on an annual basis or on a three-year basis. So we have the thirty-six month risk review for Glenn Robertson. It was targeted in March and completed in March of twenty twenty-five. There are some minor changes to the system, and then so in response, documentation has to be updated, which cannot be done internally. For the Alexandria thirty-six month risk assessment, the target is September, and it's to be completed. The annual emergency tabletop was targeted in February and completed in April. Operational staff were able to identify the issues and correct the problems. It was a step-by-step process where they walked through each process and kind of identified the risks and identified what they would do. So there's some minor documentation follow-up that's required. Infrastructure, maintenance, rehabilitation, and renewals targeted for June. It was completed in July of twenty twenty-four. This is where we go through all of our infrastructure and maintenance with operational staff and identify areas that we can either improve on or that we have major deficiencies in. Provision of infrastructure review, it's targeted for August. It was completed in November twenty twenty-four. The outcome and conclusion from that was that there was no shortfalls, capacity issues, or major changes to note in the drinking water systems. There was some major growth or expansion planned in the coming years, but not within the next year. And then there was some discussion around the, the capital planning and stuff, which I believe is part of the North Glengarry Master Plan, which should be coming soon. The management review was supposed to be held in October. It was held in March twenty twenty-five. So for obvious, obviously, the timelines are outside of the targets. The treatment and distribution systems are in place and operational with redundancies. Overall, there are some areas that can be improved. And then oh, and then the upcoming license renewals. So internal audit, that has been tentatively scheduled in August. So ideally, we want that thirty, sixty days before our external audit. And then our external audit will be held on November twenty-fifth, so. Just kind of a quick, quick summary of where the KMS is.
Go ahead, Councilor Kedel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angela, do you have much information on your supply? You know, the, the future of it and condition of our water supply?
I will defer to Tim here. I know currently we have limited information about it. Anything that we do have is kind of historical. That may have been looked at ten, fifteen years ago, but there's nothing current. I know during our management review, we did discuss looking at things through the, the master plan. He, Tim will give you more information about it.
Thank you.
Through, Ms. Ma. So jumping the gun a little bit, it's in my next work plan, work plan report, but we're approaching some firms who have done some studies to look at what, sorry, what water that Glengarry and Mill Pond can actually supply. So our treatment plant is on paper capable of producing a lot more treated water than it is currently doing. However, our permit to take water will be the limitation. So once that study is done, we can see how much water we can actually take from that, from that source.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, so on to wastewater?
Yep.
So we have a motion. You read your motion, Karma? Correct on the, yeah, so we'll vote on that. All those in favor of the motion for accepting the drinking water system's annual review, all those in favor, motion is carried. Thank you, Councilor Massey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Kedel, that the Committee of the Hall for the Township of North Glengarry received report PW twenty twenty-five dash nine, wastewater system twenty twenty-four annual review for information purposes only.
Thank you, Councilor. Angela.
So once again, this is just a quick overview of the actual annual reports that were submitted to the ministry. So we're just going to be looking over key elements within the reports. For Alexandria. So Alexandria is composed of a wastewater collection system and a wastewater treatment lagoon system. So the collection system is regulated under its own ECA now, and it's designated as a Class II separate sewer system. It does receive leachate that's hauled from the Alexandria landfill as needed, primarily in the springtime. When it comes to the wastewater treatment, it has an ECA that's valid until twenty twenty-six, which has conditions on it in regards to the construction and upgrades. It's a Class II continuous discharge, and we are currently under a Fisheries Act Directive from two thousand nineteen, which requires action to be taken to prevent the recurrence of adverse conditions. And that was in reference to acute lethality and ECA incidences that we were, that we had issues with quite a few years ago and that have started again in twenty twenty-five. So the collection system in Alexandria is twenty-five kilometers of collection piping and forced mains. There's approximately fifteen hundred and eighty-five service connections and three sanitary lift stations with one main pumping station that takes all the sewage over to the lagoon sites on McCormick Road. At the lagoons themselves, it's an influent pipe that leads into the aeration cell. We have chemical treatment for phosphorus, for phosphorus at the outfall. There's three facultative treatment cells that run in series, and we do have disinfection and dechlorination before sending it out to the drainage ditch, which runs along farmers' fields until it reaches the Dillaw River. When it comes to the sewage flows, our raw sewage flows were metered to be one million three hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and seven cubic meters this year. This included seven hundred and seventy-nine cubic meters of leachate, which was hauled between April seventeenth and April twenty-fifth. We are rated at to receive three thousand two hundred and thirty-seven per day. So currently, based on the volume provided, we are at a hundred and seventeen percent of our rated capacity. This is something that we've been struggling with for quite a few years, with the capacity issues at the lagoons. So while our flows did decrease eight percent from twenty twenty-three, we're still in, we're still exceeding our rated capacity. So what can be noted in the twenty twenty-four flows, there was increased flows observed after the spring thaw in April and then following major rain events in May, June, and July. And then there was a significant increase in flows observed in August following a major rain event. So there are three overflow events where we discharged untreated sewage into the natural environment on August ninth. It was triggered by the rainfall event, and we discharged for seventeen, just over, or just under eighteen hours. It occurred at four different locations. There's one, two, there's four, four main holes and then through the overflow at the main pumping station. When it came to the treated wastewater, so what leaves the lagoon system and then goes into the drainage ditch, we had one million four hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and six cubic meters. There is no issues noted with flow during this time or treatment bypasses or overflows from the lagoon system. So the charts just kind of indicated, the top one is a monthly summary, where the blue is the average daily flow and red is the maximum. And then we've got the main pumping station flows versus the actual lagoon flows on the two bottom ones. So for sampling and analysis, the chart on the left indicates just our monthly averages from our sample results. So all results were within the provincial limits and the federal and, federal limits as well. All quarterly sampling was completed as required, and there was no adverse results noted in twenty twenty-four. Annual monitoring for the monitoring wells were completed in March, and all results are comparable to previous findings. There's an increase in the upstream nitrate and TKN. Because it's upstream, it's not indicative that the lagoons is actually causing it. It's, there's something else. There is agricultural land around it, so it wouldn't be far-fetched to believe that it may be from that. There was an issue where ammonia has not been tested since twenty seventeen, but it is going to be included going forward as it is a required parameter. The sewage lagoons, so the sledge volumes at the sewage lagoons, so all cells in Alexandria were monitored in October twenty fourteen. So for cell A, the calculated volume of sledge is about forty-six point nine percent, which decreased from the twenty twenty-three values. There are four locations that triggered high levels, and it's mostly in the southwest corner of the cell. There are charts below just to give you an idea of how the cell is made up and where the sampling points are. When it comes to cell B, the calculated volume in this cell is about eighty-five point one percent. So this is an increase of point one percent from twenty twenty-three. Sixteen locations exceeded the trigger levels, and the highest volume is located in the northeast corner. And for cell C, the calculated volume is eighty-two point seven percent, which is a decrease from four point one from twenty twenty-three, and there are twenty-one locations that triggered high levels, mostly in the northwest corner of the cell. And it came to operational issues. Most issues were minor in nature. Once the issue was discovered, the components were repaired. That's across the treatment and the collection system. So this is just kind of a quick overview of some of the, of the issues that occurred. There was no major issues noted. At the Alexandria Lagoon, we're currently in the middle of a sledge removal project through Bishop Water. So this was a multi-phase contract to remove and process sledge and geotubes for the treatment and de-watering. The geotubes were originally installed in twenty twenty-one after being relocated to a new area. And then we decommissioned the pre-existing ones. So Bishop Water were onsite from May first until the seventeenth and removed a total volume just over, just under three thousand cubic meters from cell B. Due to insufficient capacities in the existing geotubes that were installed, there was additional units installed on top of the pre-existing units. And all water from the geotubes was returned to the lagoon system. So on the bottom right-hand side, that is what the geotubes actually look like. So they just get filled with sledge and then de-water over time. And then additional items. So part of the reporting requirement is to report on additional items. items. The EOS 2000 is a unit that's no longer in use after significant water damage. It was a unit that was put into place to try to help deal with sledge issues previously. It was not put back in service due to limited sledge depletion and management during operation that was noted. System alterations, there were some proactive manhole replacements that we did throughout the water main replacement project on Dominion Street and Derby Street. And then there was a pump panel replacement at La Rue Station due to electrical issues for infiltration and inflow reduction work. The full system had a CCTV inspection, so where they inspected the system through cameras to identify any issues of concern or damage. There was repair work that was done, such as pipelining, service grouting, and section replacements. And there was a, one of the manholes, the sluice gate, so manhole 170 is one of the manholes that whenever the system is inundated with water, it does discharge to the natural environment. So during the inspection, it was actually found to be damaged. And then when the water from the creek was above the actual sluice gate, the water was actually pouring into the system. So once that was done, once it was discovered, it was, it was resealed and replaced to prevent the surface water from entering and inflating our numbers. The proposed construction of the lagoons, so this is due to a current condition on our ECA. So to date, there's no construction or tender for the work that have been released. The Environmental Services Director and EVB are currently working on various components to be able to release the tenders for construction in the near future. And as everyone is probably aware, we did receive the House-enabled Water System Fund grant to help in eligible costs for this expansion.
Okay, I'll stop it there. Are there any questions on the Alexandria wastewater system at this point? Okay, thank you. Continue.
On to Maxville. So once again, Maxville is composed of a collection system and a treatment system. The collection system has a separate ECA and is categorized as a Class II separate sewer system. The lagoon system in Maxville is a Class I seasonal discharge with its own ECA. That ECA will not expire unless it's amended or revoked. For the collection system, it is 13 kilometers of piping and force mains, approximately 450 service connections with one sanitary lift station at the manor, well, right in front of the manor facility, and then one main pumping station that takes all the sewage from Maxville and brings it out to the lagoons. At the lagoons themselves, we have an influent chamber where there is chemical treatment for phosphorus. There's two facultative treatment lagoons that run in parallel, and then the influent is switched over annually just to ensure that each cell is being used and filled. And then seasonally, we discharge into the Scotch River. This is done in the springtime, so it coincides with the spring peak flows, so it's currently ongoing right now. When it comes to the flow summary, so the metered volume for Maxville going into the lagoon systems themselves was 171,220 cubic meters. We have a rated capacity of 450 meters cube per day. So currently, with that flow, it puts us at 104 of the rated capacity, meaning we are now exceeding the rated capacity for the site. So the average daily flow was calculated to be 468 cubic meters per day. So we're just over that threshold. The flows are slightly increased, have slightly increased from year to year since 2018. And then there have been higher than normal flows noted between June and September of 2024, and, and as per seasonal increases during the spring melt. So there are no bypasses to note in this reporting season. When it came to the seasonal spring discharge for 2024, we sent out 163,307 cubic meters to the river. It was completed over 20 days between March 8th and March 27th. And the only issue that was noted was we had a TSS, which is Total Suspended Solids Excedence, on the federal limit, but not on the provincial limits. So there's kind of a two-tiered reporting system where the federal limits are actually lower than our provincial limits. So we just surpassed it, and it was caused by one sample that was increased, so it screwed up the average. When it comes to sampling, so the parameters that you see on the left are from the discharge. So you can see that the first sample for TSS was elevated to 46, and everything after that was well below it. So because of the averaging, it just caused the exceedance on the federal side. So both cells were discharged, and water was blended before the final, before it was sent out to the river. We sampled five times during the discharge period. And you'll notice on the bottom is the actual levels in the sewage lagoons. So at one point, it was noted that the cell A and cell B, there was a discrepancy between the levels, even though the equalization pipe was open. We believe there was a blockage, which was later removed that summer, and then the levels came back to normal. When it comes to groundwater monitoring, this is actually contracted out to JP2G Consultants through Greer Galloway Group. It includes groundwater monitoring in May and October, and surface water monitoring in May, August, and October. As per the report, it indicated there was no major impact on the groundwater. However, the results are well below the limits, and no potable wells are within the immediate area. And then results indicated there was no observed impact on the surface water. Once again, operational issues. Most of the issues were minor. We did have to take one of our sewage pumps at the manor station out of service from about January until October. We had ongoing issues with failure, and then ended up determining that there was an incompatibility with our, with a panel, which was later upgraded. At the treatment side, pretty much everything we've already talked about, but everything was minor in nature. When it comes to sledge volume monitoring, so cell A hasn't been completed since 2022. The major issue with this is because we have to drop the cells so low in the springtime, by the time we come around to, to do the monitoring, the vegetation growth actually kind of exceeded what we could actually get into the cell. So in 2022 on cell A, it was 41% of the allowable volume. When it comes to cell B, we were able to get into cell B in October of 2024. That cell is currently at 39%, which is a decrease from 2023. And then there was some minor triggers at four locations near the outfall, and this indicates we just may need some dispersion around that area. And then additional information. So once again, the EOS system was included in this ECA from years ago, but the system is no longer in service for the reasons mentioned during Alexandria. When it came to system alterations, we did change out the panel for the manhole station and replaced it with a PLC and upgraded it to integrate into our SCADA system. Due to age and incompatibility with the pump, it was placed into service in October 2024, at which time the pump was also placed back into service. So we now have the, the two pumps running, and everything's back to normal. In regards to infiltration and inflow work, so we do have EVB monitoring some sewer hydraulic, some work towards a sewer hydraulic model. There is some planned work for the CCTV inspections, but I don't know if it's going to be this year or next year.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Massey?
For the capacity levels surpassing the, our capacity level, is the, the flow meter, is the flow calculated from the pumping station to the lagoon, or is it calculated at the lagoon? Like the, the flow?
Yep, so through you, Mr. Mayor. So historically, we used to use a flow meter at the main pumping station. We did have one installed at the main station, at the lagoon system, the inflow, and we noticed there was a discrepancy. So we started using the one at the lagoon system because it's more accurate. It's a mag meter, so it's a little bit more accurate. So our levels came down slightly, but they're still over what they should be.
So, so infiltration can happen from that pumping station to the lagoons too? Because that's a long distance from Maxville. So it could, it could be a problem in there too?
It, it could be a problem in there as well. It's highly unlikely, though, because whenever the pumps are in service, it's pressurized pump, right? So as soon as, as soon as the flow would be going, we would see some sort of leakage somewhere along the transmission main if there was a leak. Because the flows have been steadily increasing since 2018, I think it's more of an issue in the collection system as opposed to on the force main.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Matt.
I'm just thinking, because it's been since 2018 that people are actually using more water, we've got it. That's what I'm thinking.
That is a possibility. It could also be that with the, the well systems being decommissioned, the groundwater could be higher. And if there's any kind of leaks in the pipes, there could be more pressure on the pipes and coming to the pipes as well, so.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And where are we at with sump pump connections? Because I know that that was a factor.
Let me defer you to Tim.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We won't, we could bring in a bylaw to make all of the residents remove their sump pumps from the septic system and place it somewhere else. The problem that we have is there really isn't anywhere else for people to put them. So if people, there, there is not a good stormwater collection system in Maxville. There's an old one, which is very haphazardly put together. So as part of the roads budget, there's a storm, stormwater management plan line item, which is township-wide, and that's the CCTV-ing and inspection and mapping of the system that we've got, which will then feed into a RFP for an engineer to figure out what should be the stormwater systems for both Maxville and Alexandria. We started working on Alexandria first, but the 85,000 really covers about one-third of the Alexandria system. So it's, it's, it's quite the project to be done over a, a long period of time. And then once you have a stormwater system in place, that's where that would be the effective to add in a sump pump bylaw to make sure that everyone adds it. But we could bring a bylaw to, to make people remove sump pumps if that was what we want to do.
Yeah, I think we need to figure out where the water's going to go. And, and I think the Deputy Mayor has stated that she will go door-to-door to check on those. Deputy Mayor, is that sufficient?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, the, it's, the resolution has already been read. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. We will go back right now to, to Jacob.
Thanks, Jennifer. Sorry about the technical issues before, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, I have a super-long and boring presentation. And then I'll, I'll make it quick. I had Sarah and I discussed, and it was a good timing to do just a quick presentation on zoning bylaws and zoning bylaw amendments with recent events that happened in the township. So this is really just for information purposes, just so council knows a little bit more about planning and zoning bylaw amendments. So first slide here, what is planning? So basically, the main goal of planning is to try to harmonize communities and environmental stewardship with sustainable growth. So basically, when you're talking planning, it's really, you're talking about the Planning Act, which is the set of rules for planning in the province of Ontario. So the Planning Act is the set of rules for both the guy living on the 99th floor in Toronto and for the person living here on a 200-acre farm. So it's a really broad document. It's a set of rules that really sets out like the, on how the planning should be done. But you'll see, like, as my little, my little slide here, there are so other documents to help us to do that. So basically, the next one down is provincial policy statement. So that, I refer to that often during my presentation. So this is like the, it's like the helpers or the statement, or how we should implement, or how we should deal with the Planning Act, basically. So I'll show some examples later. Then provincial plan, so we, we don't have a provincial plan here. We go down to the next one, which is the county official plan. So over here in North Glengarry, we had an official plan for North Glengarry up until 2005, I believe. And then all the townships went with the county official plan. So this is dealt with at the upper-tier municipality, at the counties, and then we're right down there with zoning bylaws. So this is all, like, the zoning bylaws technically comes down from all of these, these documents. So what is the Planning Act? So as I mentioned, the Planning Act is basically the, the set of rules. So it's an act. It's just like every other act in Ontario. It's the set of rules on how to deal with, with planning in Ontario. The first thing down, provincial policy statements. So that's, that's like how I explain it. The, the Planning Act is so broad that they needed some, some helpers to, on how to deal with the, with the Planning Act. So this is what it says. So this is, they're not rules, they're not regulation, they're just really like, they're statements, they're recommendation, there's like, it, it explains on, on how it should be directed, on how it should be dealt with. So the three major PPS sections, as you can see down there, so building strong, healthy communities, wise management of resources, and protecting public health and safety. So as you can see, this is, again, very, very broad. So this is province-wide. So this, this is what it is. So it's just been revamped in 2024. And just, so these are the ones I, I use the more often. So basically, when I do a report for zoning bylaw amendment, it has to conform with the official plan, and it also has to be in line with the provincial policy statement to make sure it conforms with the Planning Act. So that's why I, I state those sentences in my report. It's just to basically justify on why this zoning should be done. So the two first ones, I guess, are the ones that we use often. Encourages planning authorities to identify focus where growth should happen and prioritize where it should happen. So basically, this says like if, like, you know, when we're, when we're changing R1 to R2, well, why is this encouraged? Well, it's because of this sentence there that says that growth should be encouraged. And the second one is mostly for, for like, a mix with the agricultural and residential. So for us in the country, as I mentioned, we have to use these statements a little bit differently than in town because we have, we absolutely have to have a mix of, of, of like residential, agricultural, residential, agricultural and commercial all mixed together, separate from industrial. So it's hard with, like, this is very broad, but that's why these statements come in handy, where you can rely on, on what they say to justify your decision. So when I demonstrated the council, it comes from somewhere. It's just not, this should be passed because we wanted to. It really comes from, from this document. The official plan, as I mentioned, this is done for us here, it's done at upper-tier municipality, at the county level. So the official plan, I, this is what it is. So it's, it's an actual document with, with maps and wording, but I like to refer it as like, it's, it's like a roadmap. So basically, the official plan is the first thing we check when someone calls to, to change his zoning, or to see if what he wants to do complies with the zoning. So we always check the official plan because our zoning has to match the official plan. And this really is, it, it says on how the land should be used. So at, like, this is done at county level. So all the six townships together, there's, like, you've, you've seen the maps. I show them often. Like, they just say how it should be used. So this should be agricultural, this should be rural. So when I say that, some, for us, we were lucky, it's because the official plan changed a lot of that. So we have more options with our land. But this really says, if you're agricultural, you cannot do a subdivision. Like, it's, it's not permitted. So it really just states on how we should regulate the land. And then, next one down, so the zoning bylaw. So this really, here what I'm talking about is really our document, like our, our zoning bylaw itself. So this is, is directly in line with the official plan. Basically, we take the official plan, we Basically, we take the official plan, we create the zoning bylaw based from what the official plan tells us to do. So if the official plan says that this should be residential district, well, in our zoning bylaw, we can decide the density. We can decide, it, it can also be institutional. So we have many zonings that can fit into one official plan designation. So the, the official plan says you have to use that at residential or as employment district. So within that, we can use the land like we want, like the zoning bylaw wants. And the zoning bylaw, on top of, of precising what exactly the use should be, it also states things like, it has all the rules like for the lot size that I mentioned, parking setbacks. So all the numbers and all the, the rules that, that can physically be enforced, they come from the zoning bylaw. So this is why it comes down to like the municipality, because as I said before, you could not have a zoning bylaw province wide technically, because it's so different from, from area to area. So that's why there's the official plan that specify how we should use our land. And then the zoning bylaw specifies on the rules on how these lands should be regulated. So this is our, our cover page from our zoning bylaw. So it dates from 2000. It is being updated, as I mentioned earlier. So again, this I, I just talked about it really. So the, so again, when someone comes in here to develop a land, we check the official plan to make sure the zoning matches. And the next thing that we check, when they want to develop the lands, of course, they want to build something. So the use of the building itself is also defined in the zoning bylaw. So the list of permitted use is only in the zoning bylaw. The official plan doesn't, doesn't have a specified permitted use. It just says the land has to be used as agricultural. Then in your zoning bylaw, well, if you go in agricultural, it says that you can have a house there. You can have a home-based business there. So you can have different building, different accessory uses, and that's all defined in, in the zoning bylaw. So why you need a zoning bylaw, really, it's just to, as I mentioned, to, really, this is to, to protect the community. So it's to protect from a neighbor building, manufacturing plant in the middle of Maxville, like in the middle of a residential area, there's gonna be nuisance, there's gonna be like traffic. So it really protects the citizen of a township. So that's why it's there. You want your residential to stay like, this is the, this is Maxville, this is the zoning of Maxville. So as you can see, i- if we would look at the official plan, everything that's pink there would be also designated as residential in the official plan. So everything that's core area, institutional or residential, they all fit within the, the, the residential district of the official plan. And then if you go just southwest, where you have the industrial, well, this also follows the official plan. So it's, as you, you see it there, like it's separate from residential, it's separate from the downtown Maxville. So the official plan will state that we have to use these lines as such. And then you take this and you can create different zones for different use you have within a certain designation. And same for, so this is for within Maxville. So there's a lot more designation and a lot more different densities and different zoning. If you go out in the country, so this is basically around Laguerie Lake. So out in the country for North Glengarry, we have mostly rural or agricultural. And then you will have like over there, you see the wetlands around the lake. But so everything that's green there is rural. So there you can create lots, there you can do different things. Everything that's blue, you have to, to keep it as agricultural. But it doesn't mean, so even if it's designated as agricultural, you can still have different zones. So as you can see, there's quarries there, there's different accessory, sorry, different exceptions in the, the zoning that we did. So this is just the, the, the real, the real zoning map there. All the designation is within our, our book, our, our numbers. So an amendment. So when you want to use some, some land with a certain use that is not permitted within our zoning bylaw, so you have to do a zoning bylaw amendment. So every time someone wants to do something that's not permitted, he has to do this, he has to do a zoning bylaw amendments. Now, the first step is to check to make sure that he, he can change it. So the provincial policy statement will say that something you can change because of, of growth and because it's encouraged, because of, of whatnot, of economy or environment or whatnot. So an amendment can only be done in certain circumstances, and that's what we have to rely on the PPS. So how the zoning is passed? So the next few slides, I just really wanted to, to, to clarify. So when, when someone comes to us with an idea or with a proposal for a zoning bylaw amendment, I'm sure you've noticed, like council does not deny a lot of, of zoning bylaws. Like it's, I, I don't think it ever happened to, to me where a bylaw was, was denied by council. And this is because we basically sit down with the person and we explain it to them before. Like people can still apply, but they will spend money for nothing because we tell them it, it will be denied because it's not permitted. Council is not allowed to pass that zoning bylaw. So that's why you don't see a lot of bylaws that are, that are denied. The, the next couple of slides is really after we meet with the person the first time. So we, basically, we tell them there's about two to three months, two, two to three month waiting period before your zoning bylaw is final and binding. There's really four periods. So there's the period of, I call it the advertisement period, that's before the public meeting. So you have to notify people around, you have to gather all the information, you have to, to post onsite, all before the public meeting. And then the planning, the Planning Act says that you have to have at least one public meeting for every zoning bylaw amendment that you want to do. And that's what we do at our public meeting of planning. So over here, it's not called a planning meeting, it's called a public meeting of planning, simply because if you call it a planning meeting, council, house, council has to appoint a planning committee. So it becomes just a little bit more complicated. It's simpler just to do a public meeting where council can be, can be council and there's no recommendation done for council. So it's really just a, a transfer of information. And then, so that's the second period, the meeting. The third period is the, the actual council meeting where we will pass the bylaw. And the fourth period is the appeal period after the bylaw. So I like to separate it like that, to explain to people. Basically, that's what that says here. So when someone comes to us with an application, so we, we explain it to him, it's him or her, it's possible to do that. You have to provide us with that information. Again, here, it's a lot because most of the zoning that we do are surplus dwelling, which is always the same copy paste, or we do like a surplus, you know, additional dwellings on the property. Those are the, our biggest two that we see. So we don't often have that, like we don't ask for, for specific grading plans or surveys, planning rationale, studies and stuff like that. We just really ask for what we need, basically pictures, the survey of the property and like why it's kept to a minimum, et cetera. But we could ask for all that information. So with, with the, with the battery thing, we had all that, those lists of documents that were all provided. So it, it can get a lot more complicated than just a surplus dwelling that we normally see. So once all the, the fee has been paid, the, the documents have been submitted, we then proceed to, to this step here, which is the public notification. So public notification for a zoning bylaw, so that comes directly from the Planning Act. So it comes directly from the set of rules that the province set. We have to notify all the landowners, just the landowners, not the tenants. So we notify the landowners within 120 meters of that property, at least 20 days before the public meeting. We also have to post it onsite. So these are the only two things we are required to do. It's either that or you post it in the newspaper. But over here, because the newspapers are like, we have Times here, they don't come out often. We, we still do post it in the newspaper and on our website, but we do, we do everything. So we just go a little bit above and beyond to try to make sure the most are, are notified of the change. But again, the township is so big that 11 by 17 sign, it is so much to be seen by members of the public. But that's what we're required to do. So yeah, we post it on the property and we send it to, oh, skipped. So that's when we did the McEwen zoning bylaw amendment. So as you can see there, usually a phone poll or a tree. So I post the sign right there at least 20 days in advance on the property. So people who go by, some of them stop, they read the advertisement. It basically just says it's a map of where it is, when is the meeting, what time is the meeting, the address, and what it is being changed to, like a quick description. And I have just another quick, so that's what it is right there. So it's just an advertisement. This is the exact same thing that is being sent to all landowners. It's also being sent to all the agencies, so all the schools, conservation authority, Hydro One, Bell, everybody. Like in this case, it was sent to the nation. So when there's a, when there's a township within one kilometer of the zoning bylaw amendment, we also have to notify the neighboring township. And then, so there's the public meeting. So the public meeting is when everybody is permitted to, to speak. So the, the CEO will ask if there's members of the public that wish to speak, wish to express their concern. The council would also be able to say, we don't have enough information, we'd need this and this and that, and able to be able to approve the zoning bylaw amendment. So that's, that's why there's two options at this point. So if council is really aware of, of, of the zoning bylaw amendment, if it's a super straightforward zoning bylaw, we don't have, and if there's no comments from any agencies or members of the public, we can go directly to council meeting and pass the bylaw. But that's why between the public meeting and council meeting, sometimes we try to leave that the two weeks or the subsequent meeting for that. So if someone would have questions, clarification, it gives them time before the actual passing of the bylaw. Okay, yeah, so how bylaws are evaluated? So this is what I basically say when I do the presentation. So conformity with the official plan, suitable for, for the land and the, the, the adjacent neighbors. Is it adequate for vehicular access, water supply, sanitary, et cetera? And the last thing there that I wrote, so when council considered a bylaw, decision shall always be consistent with PPS. So I know I, I go very quickly through that slide, but basically, the report justifies at the end of the day why it's consistent with the PPS. Public involvement. So if a member of the public has concern about the proposed zoning bylaw, so what, their first step usually is they, they, they need to call us or get in touch with us. And this happens often. When people get their notification in the mail, we do get some phone calls, we do get some questions about the zoning bylaw. And that's why when we explain it to them, they're aware of what's going on and usually it stops there. If they want to have more information, we would first of all, meet with them and then invite them to the public meeting, where I would have my, my full report and go through the, to, to the whole thing. So they would know exactly what's going on. And at this point, they should be at the meeting if they want to express concerns because they either have to, to talk at the meeting or they have to, to write the submission, write us an email saying that they have concern with the bylaw. And if they would, I would be forced to, to tell council before the meeting. So if, if someone, if someone wants to have, I guess it's my next slide, but if someone wants to have the right to appeal, they absolutely have to talk at, to talk or send there an email before the, the actual bylaw is passed. So this here, council, this is like the, the period. So we had the public meeting, there was no concern, or if there was, they were resolved. Then we bring the file back to council meeting to actually pass the bylaw. And at this point, so council could decide to, oh, sorry, no, this is basically just that if, if there's no members, that's the sign I'm talking for. So council could decide to either pass the bylaw, they could decide to deny the application, or they could decide to defer the application until we have more information. So even at council state, at council meeting stage, there could be a, a deferral or a denial. So that's why we said, we tell people, it's hard when it's not compliant with anything because even though you get to this step, so technically, the township staff could appeal the council's decision at this point. So if, if, if we present the file and we say that it's not as per PPS and whatnot, if council still decides to pass the, the decision, we would be obligated to appeal the decision. So that it, it, it becomes handy when you can meet with the people and really explain to them of what will happen if they do because they'll waste their money, basically. So right after the bylaw is passed, within 15 days of the decision, we have to mail the decision to, to the owner, to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and to the counties. And then the day after the meeting, the 20 day appeal period starts. So basically, this is the period where anybody who would have spoken before or during public meeting, the minister or the applicant, the applicant could still appeal council's decision. This is the notice of passing that I, that I send to, to the ministry and to the owner. Again, this I just appealed to write, so you absolutely have to have a written comment submitted to the township or you had, have spoken at the public meeting. When the appeal is made, so we just went through this, so when the appeal is made, basically, the township has to submit everything to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So it becomes staff job to submit the complaint and to submit the, like all the documents. And from there, the Ontario Land Tribunal's decision is the final decision. So they will, they will decide if it was the best planning, planning decision, if it's consistent with PPS, et cetera. So again, here in North Glengarry, council don't, don't deny or don't like vote against some zoning bylaws often. But if it would happen, the applicant could also be able to, to appeal the decision. So that's why what the, when we say the applicant is allowed to appeal the decision, it's, it's not really for when the decision is passed, it's really for when it's denied. So that's why it's there. It doesn't happen often here, but I assume it happens in larger, larger townships. So this is, I went through it, this is just very quick wrap up. So these are different types of, of bylaws. So again, as I mentioned, we're trying to pass this, this delegation bylaw. So there are other types of bylaws. So this one here, a holding bylaw, so I'm, I'm pretty sure all you guys know what, what it is because we have some in the township and we do have to remove some holding bylaws off in here. So this is placed on a property, usually when either services are adequate or when there's like, when there's technical studies required, when there's something that needs to happen with the land before it can be developed. So the township simply puts a hold. Basically, the owner at this point cannot develop the land before he removes the hold. So this protects from like, if someone would have, we're in this situation right now, actually, in Maxville, where someone has a 30 acre property and he wants to, to build a house on the property, but it's, there's a holding on it because it's designated for future subdivisions. Because there's a hold, we cannot issue him a building permit. So if, he cannot put like just one house in the middle of a super large property that would prevent any future development from Maxville. Like I, I was looking for the picture, but we see this in all the planning presentation. There's, I think it's in Toronto, there's an old farmer, he owns like a 50 acre farm in the middle of, of the city. So it looks like Central Park in the, he's got like an intensive livestock facility in the middle of this. So this, these are, these are holding zones are placed for that. So as soon as he stops the current use, no one can develop the land in anything else but a subdivision or new residential development. So that's why they're for, so that's one of the ones we have in Maxville. So holding bylaws are, are usually removed when the requirement for what was missing is, is achieved. So if there's servicing needs, as soon as the services are available, we remove the hold, et cetera. So this is one thing that the delegation bylaw would do. It would give the, the, delegate the permission to the CEO to remove a hold. So that's what we will need to do at the Ledessar subdivision here, because we had placed one before for servicing. Interim control bylaw, so this is just another tool for a township. I've never used it since I started working here. So basically, it's just, you put like a, a bylaw on the entire township to prevent something from happening. So the best example, the ones I, the only ones I've seen actually, well, no, there's another one in the nation for something else. But there's an interim control bylaw for like there, when they came out, when the province came out with the cannabis rules. So they just said it's permitted, but also a lot of townships were worried that this was gonna blow. So what they did is they, they passed an interim control bylaw, preventing any cannabis retail or production in the township up until the time that we have more information from the province and et cetera. So that's a tool that you have just to, to control for a certain period of time before you get more information. And temporary use bylaw, so that, we have a few in the township here. These are mostly used, they were used in the past to permit secondary homes. So these will, we, we won't see them often anymore because we have other options other than that. So basically, this is bylaw that you pass on the property to permit something that is not permitted for a certain amount of time. So we have two that I know of in the township that have like two homes and they were permitted to, to have the two homes for, I think it was 10 years. Really hard to keep track of because 10 years after, it's not, most likely not the same person even that's there. So anyway, we're, we So anyway, we're, we see less and less of that and we're gonna see less also, because secondary homes will be permitted, so we won't need any temporary uses bylaw. So this is just a, a quick wrap-up of what Peter presented for delegation of authority. So basically, what that is, it's really just for like minor bylaws. And it really helps, like it's efficient, so it's, it's really time-consuming sometimes to do all the reports and whatnot. So when we do a report and we know we're, like, we know the outcome of the, like, especially when it's part of a consent application, for example, like for surplus dwellings, we have to pass the bylaw. Well, we know it's gonna pass, because it's like upper tier municipality already said that it was okay. So these types of, of zoning, so it's really for efficient, for, to, to focus on other priorities. So we have more time in the meetings, basically, to, 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 to focus on other stuff, reduce delays, maintain public engagement, that always has to be there. So even though we have the, well, the CEO has the possibility to, to sign a bylaw without council, I guess, being the ones who signed the bylaw, we still have to advertise to the public. So this will not change. Still has to be posted on the property, mailed to every owner around. It's just the, the, the council, the, the public meeting and the council step that's, that's being expedited. So these are examples of, of minor amendments, minor zoning bylaw amendments. So again, I mentioned zoning that are part of consent applications, lifting of holding symbols. So usually, staff will be the one telling council, no, like if for servicing, for example. So staff will be the one knowing that we can remove the hold before council, because we presented to council and then we asked them to remove the hold. So it's kind of redundant, I guess. So in this case, we could, the, the CEO would have the power to remove a holding symbol. Garden suites and temporary use bylaws. Again, as I mentioned, this would have been useful five years ago, but now the zoning bylaw will change, so this will all be permitted anyways. Part lot control, I, I assume would be pretty useful. This is for when you want to sever a semi-detached in half, basically. So you don't, right now, we have to do the whole process, bylaws and whatnot. So in this case, you could just have the CEO sign the bylaw and you start the process. So it expedites things a lot. And site plan development agreement, so I know this is, this one, I, I'm not too sure about that one. It's, it's good that the CEO can sign, but I do understand the fact that council want to be aware of any site plan development. So it's super easy just to do like information presentations also without like, like, I mean, we, we wouldn't pass a site plan development agreement that would be controversial without letting council know, of course. But I, I do understand that one, it's, it's part of the, of the delegation bylaw that Peter did with the township, so I just left it there. And yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. That was very informative. Questions or comments at this point? Go ahead, Tiffany, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just relating to the notification to, to property owners, I think it, I think you said 120 meters is the requirement in the Planning Act?
Yes.
And is, is that sufficient for more sensitive zoning bylaw amendments?
I guess with, with what recently happened, potentially, no. But it's, it's done, like I'm, I just follow what's in the book. The, the question, like, let's say someone lives at 125 meters and he considers this as controversial. Well, if we start to go 125 or the guy at 126, well, so where does it end? I guess the line has been put there, that's what, that's what we use. Is it con, in some instances, no, it's probably not enough, but in 99% of the, of, so, out in the country, the problem is, like, sometimes it's just one property around, right? When you have a zoning bylaw amendment in town, sometimes there's 60 people that get notified. So yes, it is sufficient and like, there's a lot of people that get notified. It would be like, I mean, it would be, a request would have to be done at the ministry to change that, that number, basically. There are no other numbers. If you, if your zoning permits what the application wants, the only number we have to use for advertisement is 120 meters, regardless of, of what it is.
Okay, thanks. Can you go back to the, the illustration of the?
Which one?
The advertisement that would have gone in the paper.
I tried to, I'll, I'll go right there, but I, I tried to make it a little bit more straightforward like that, because I know the wording is sketchy. We, the wording from that notice, by the way, comes directly from, from, from the Planning Act. This one, yes? So the wording at the bottom, I, I changed it, I tried to make it a little bit clearer, but the text there comes directly word for word from, from the Planning Act, yeah. That's the one we, we sent.
Yeah, no, I, I understand you're following the, the rules there. Excuse me. So see that farm over on the left?
Yes.
Like, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I have no idea what distance these things are. I'm just curious. And, and then the properties to the south?
Yes.
Like, those are, I know they're just agricultural, straight to the south, and then the, the houses are further south. So if, if that piece of agricultural property is within 120 meters, is it the house or the property?
It's the property. It's, it's from property line to property line.
Okay.
Yeah. So if, if the owner, like, like you said, if the owner lives like one kilometer south, but on the same parcel of land, he will still get notified. It's all, like, we, we take the, the perimeter of, of the property that's, that's being discussed and we buffer this out, 120 meters. So all the properties that touches that buffer get, gets notified.
So how far would that go on the south side of the 417?
Well, maybe I didn't use the right one for the, the example, but in this case, the 417 was 130 meter wide. So basically, the neighbors south of the 417 were not notified.
Yeah, I think that's where we ran into.
Yes, yeah, that's, maybe I didn't pick the right one. Everybody in the north was.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, no, and I, I think that we should come back with some kind of plan of moving forward on, on how we, how we do this. So I think we've been talking about that and just maybe going above and beyond a little bit. But I think just, we seem to get the, on our Facebook page, you know, we have lots of followers on there. The word gets out at least and, you know, we can put what planning applications are coming up or that kind of thing, just so people have some advance warning of it.
Thank you, thank you.
Technically, the only people that can, that can actually put in a, a, a complaint is, they have to be within 120.
Well, if, if, like, anybody can, can come to the meeting and express his concern.
Yes.
So if someone living here in Alexandria has concerns, they're allowed to come at the public meeting and express their concern. This gives them the right to appeal. But if they, if they live 17 kilometers from there, if they appeal at OLT, the Ontario Land Tribunal will say, well, you have the right to appeal, but you don't have a valid reason to appeal. So we will dismiss this, this appeal. That's what will happen. But yeah, anybody can come in and appeal, basically.
Okay, for the questions or comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Jacob, for that, that was very informative. I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to Public Works, PW 2025-10, Public Works Work Plan Update Q1 2025, Councilor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole for the Township of North Glengarry receives report PW 2025-10, Public Works Work Plan Update Q1 2025, for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you leaving the best, best till last. So we had a, a very severe winter this winter. So January had significant snow accumulation and icy conditions, high winds at the end of the month. February had several major snow events, deep snow banks on going cold. March featured continued freeze-thaw cycles and occasional snowfalls and with some gradual warming. But we're still wearing sweaters outside right now. So the significant weather event, we had one on February 16th. So due to heavy snowfall, drifting snow and whiteout conditions caused by high winds, 11/28, we made a significant weather event statement through Ontario Regulation 239/02. The significant weather event declaration was ended on the 19th, so three days later. During this period, residents were advised to avoid unnecessary travel, to expect delays in the clearing of sidewalks, parking lots and roadways. I'll go, I have, my next report goes in detail into the MMS, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Can I make a suggestion? A resident a month ago mentioned that, you know, when we, when we had that major significant snowfall and it was two, two, three days and then we, you know, everybody was complaining that roads were closed or something. So if, if we are, like, our staff are like, and they work overtime and they were like tired and we can only have so many staff on hand, too. If, if we plan to put a, plan to not service that road in the next 24 hours, can we not put a, like, somebody mentioned that if we put cones or something, road closed until further notice? It's just that a suggestion was made from a guy that travels a lot in Quebec. In Quebec, they, that's what they use, they, if they know that they can't service that road adequately, they will put a cone, say, okay, so people don't engage in that road and come up to a snow wall or something. That is just a suggestion, I thought it was pretty, pretty smart.
Go ahead, Tim.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll, I have another report after this, which is on minimum maintenance standards, where we can probably dive into that in further detail. He may be talking about roads which are only serviced during, that are not serviced during the, the winter time, so seasonal roads, which we do have a few of those in the township. And we had some roads that, that were affected like that, Max Corners specifically. So, and, and that road, we actually did exactly that. We put down cones on each side.
Yep.
He said he engaged in there and he got stuck?
Yep. So I'll, I'll go through that a little bit more in detail and, no, that's fine. So, yeah, we had a lot of operational strain and delays during this, this time. We had thought that during this winter, we had planned for a, a winter somewhere in between the winter that we just had and the winter that we had before. Because the 2023, 2024 winter, we were very below everything that we thought we were. We had a, a surplus on our overtime and winter removals, and then we had the exact opposite. So we were planning, you know, through our manpower and we wanted to actually get a, a bit of in-house work done in some of the renovations at the industrial building which we're converting. None of that happened. It was, it was constant. So constant maintenance activities and no downtime for the start at all, really. So I, I won't go through all of it in detail. There is some deeper descriptions there. But we had some notable, notable tree removals following wind events, streetlight repairs, especially in Glen Sandfield, and repairs to damaged culverts and properties impacted by snow removal operations. So, but overall, our team did really, really well. We have, we're still listed for looking for a sidewalk operator. One of our operators just decided he didn't want to do the job anymore, because he had other things, stuff that he does. It's a, it's a, only a seasonal position, so we're still looking for that. And, but overall, our staff are doing really well. The, especially the newly acquired staff, Chantelle Lacasse did really, really well this year, especially with, just to, to speak to how well that training program's been going and the leadership roles that are out there, everyone's doing really well. In the Water Works Department, we had some major main breaks, very complicated by frozen ground and snow cover. Notable incidents on McDonald Boulevard and on Main Street South, required excavation, light leak repairs, restoration of water service and frozen hydrants there were thought using hot water to ensure fire protection. I won't go too far into the water and wastewater, because we just really went through a lot of that. But there was, you know, intensive snow removal, mailpox and property repairs, pothole patching and sidewalk maintenance. We also had garbage issue, garbage collection issues with HGC that we did actually send them charges for. We went out and self-performed the pickup. And then we had, we increased the bag limit for, for a week to kind of make up for that period, because some of that was due to the contractor and some of that was just due to the weather. There was, no matter what kind of contractor you were, you wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to handle it. So all in all, staff did really well. We have a Public Works, add, new Public Works admin who's taken over the garbage collection issue and did really well communicating with residents using our, our portal that more and more residents are using, that we're able to respond to, to issues very, very quickly. And overall, it's, overall, it's been positive. We have been through that transition with recycling moving over and meetings at the Regional Waste Management Group have gone very well. And we've had some leads on the administrative, the administrator for MTARA, who is our recycling, who does recycling for the SDG region, who has been very responsive to concerns. So they're at 10,000 feet, they manage MTARA, who then manages HGC, who then manages the recycling. So overall, considering how many of the changes it's been, I think it's been successful. There has also been recent communications from CMO. This isn't in my report, but we're chasing it down, that are, because CMO's diversion numbers have been down in rural areas, they're looking to increase that. So that would be, they're looking around to see if they can open up a depot. And my understanding is that that could possibly include commercial recycling, but I, I think that's for a fee. So I'll continue to investigate that and bring that back to council when we've got information. But one of the reasons I'm very interested is that they, CMO will run the, a lot of the, you know, the batteries, the electronic equipment and that type of stuff for zero cost to the municipality, as long as you have a piece of land that they can take it to. So that could work really well with our operations at the new Public Works building. So I'll, I'll be reporting back on that in the coming weeks. So capital projects. So Public Works made notable headway in infrastructure upgrade agenda. So we have already awarded Centre Street Bridge. There are the notifications that work should go out in early May, just so we can, we have already talked to a lot of the residents around there, but just a reminder letter, this work is starting, it will start mid-July. That's a restriction from the, the fisheries. So we're not actually allowed to start in water work until then. We unfortunately have been able to, haven't been able to make much progress on the 265 industrial location, just due to the weather. But we do, we have put some heating in there, we have started to move out a lot of that sorting equipment and done a little bit of cleanup there as well. Gotten rid of the last pieces of recycling that were hanging around in the yard. We've done the major maintenance cycle for the Kenyon Grader, replacing the tires. They're ready for the gravel work this year. We also, as council remembers, where we purchased that loader, which is going to, going to be great to facilitate those operations. So in the coming summer, we have overlays on the Cormick Road concession for Wheelam Street East Boundary, the GSP parking lot. They're all scheduled for completion in the late summer. They'll significantly improve driving conditions and extend the life of our roads. It's part of our LCB buttering program. The Rolla Massey Crossing upgrade, we have federal funds for that this year, so we'll try and complete that. We need to get that done before September, we should be able to contract all of that out. We also, we're planning to replace about 650, that's square meters, not linear meters, of sidewalks. And facility upgrades as well. So Kenyon Garage, Kenyon Hill Garage. And facility upgrades as well, so Kenyon Garage, Kenyon Hill Garage updates are in the planning stages at the moment. But the, the idea is to give safe, efficient workplaces for staff, ensure that our critical equipment is housed in optimal conditions. We mentioned the stormwater management plan is ongoing, so we're going to camera the second third of the Alexandria Storm System this year. That happens in late summer, we can only get in there at certain times due to the stormwater flows. That will then feed into an RFP, which will feed into a plan for a. An infrastructure renewal for our stormwater systems in Alexandria and in Maxwell as well. Spring gravel resurfacing program, we spoke about, we're also advancing several water and wastewater infrastructure projects, so. Glen Robinson Water Treatment Plant Building Extension, we're doing some water main replacements are planning for next year. We really want to make sure this coincides with all the infrastructure on a certain section of road, so that we can make sure we're replacing everything before we go on pave. We also have some process equipment upgrades and. Some process equipment upgrades and then of course the lagoon, so there will be some reports. I think in next council meeting, actually, which would be some of the things that we can get done this year for essentially. Preparatory works for the Alexandria Lagoon and we also are looking at some studies. That EVB can do that will facilitate the, the entire system, so one of those is the. The mill pond, how much water we can actually take from mill pond, and another part of that is a sewage pumping station EA as well. So just to speak about the Alexandria Lagoon for a moment, is that the plan, if you look at the work plan, is just planning stages this year. We will go and do the gravel compaction, so we'll bring in. We did a geotechnical study last year and we noticed that the twenty seventeen design had some deficiencies where it came to. The, the, the geotechnical report, so the foundations that were proposed compared to the geotechnical conditions. Weren't really going to, going to match up, so we're going to go and preload those areas, so we, we already have that compaction down. So that'll happen that, this year, we're also out there with Bishop Water at the moment, we've asked them for a proposal to accelerate the works. So the Bishop Water de-sludging was supposed to, was a. In, in normal conditions is a project that you would undertake over many, many years, probably something like ten years to really de-sledge it. But because we're upgrading those cells, we're asking for a proposal that'll be part of the lagoon upgrades. To actually complete all that lagoon de-sludging this year, so we're out there right now doing the. The imaging that'll let us focus that, that de-sludging efforts, so that should be. You'll probably see the EVB. Design changes in the next report and then after that we'll see the de-sludging as well. So we have some key risks, so supply chain delays in construction materials, we've, we're able to see that the Alexandria Lagoon is completely. Canadian sourced, so we, we're not looking, we've already investigated and we don't see any systems that we have to get from. The States or anywhere overseas, so that's really good news. So we're, yeah, we're looking at early procurement for not just waterworks, but across the board. You know, flexible scheduling and really talking to the suppliers early to make sure that we can get everything that we need on time. I also have the work plan up there, so you can see when our general schedule is. Some things that I'll mention is there is a roads need study happening this year, so we're going to try and do that in-house and. To be able to get those, and by in-house, I mean between our, our in-house staff and SDG. As North Dundas just did, I believe it was North Dundas just did, and. We also have, sorry, we already spoke about the municipal drinking water license financial plan as well. The other thing that is going to go out is we're going to send out a reminder letter to Glen Robinson. That, all the residents in Glen Robinson who were in that source water protection zone, that they do need to have their septic systems inspected next year. So, don't be surprised when, when that comes around, so. And that's a quick summary of our work plan for the first, for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Tim, questions or comments? Perfect, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, the motion is carried. It's a lesson for all staff, if you want to go last, tend to get less questions. Okay, Tim, minimum maintenance standards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so.
I'll put it on the table, go ahead, Captain Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, moving on myself, second to my councillor Madden, the committee, the whole of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report, EW twenty twenty-five dash eleven. Minimum maintenance standards for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so. Minimum maintenance standards really boil down to section forty-four, one of the municipal act, which is that a municipality has. So the municipality has jurisdiction over a highway bridge, shall keep it in a state of repair that is reasonable in the circumstances, including the character and location of the highway or bridge. So the minimum maintenance standards were created. Was created when municipalities asked for a defensible standard for maintaining highways, it's essentially a, a legal defense. As well as a cross-the-board standard that was developed by the Association of Good Roads, so it. It was buy-in from lawyers, it was buy-in from public works officials and engineers. To come up with a standard that was fair and reasonable and reliable. So, one of the things that prompted this report was that. We, there was a seminar at the Good Roads Association with, about the upcoming regulation amendment. That expanded minimum maintenance standards, which makes it very useful for municipalities, one of the things that they're including is between the. Is the definition of the boulevard, so between the road edge and the edge of the property line on a rural cross-section. And between the edge of the sidewalk and the road on a urban cross-section. So minimum maintenance standards is a fantastic standard that helps municipalities and. Provides a clear defensible standard for maintaining highways and by highway, we mean any public road, bridge or structure maintained by a municipality. It's also, the amendment is also, it's not as relevant to us, but it also is being expanded to include bicycle lanes and facilities. So, one of the things, some of the things that are relevant to us is that. Unopened road allowances are not covered by minimum maintenance standards and. This actually came up in the seminar when questions were asked about this and one of the major issues across Ontario that. Municipalities run into is ATVs and snowmobile trails operating on unopened road allowances. And when there's an incident, the lawyers will try and use sort of minimum maintenance standards to say that the municipality had. Certain obligations when they don't, so one of the reports that you'll see is to essentially. Remove the gray area and close all of our unopened road allowances by bylaw, that way there's no, there's no question. Because there's a, a certain criteria where you figure out what is an unopened road allowance and it's. It's road allowances that were established before a certain date and set out by Crown surveyors and there's a, a list of them. So it makes it a lot simpler if we can bring a bylaw that says these road allowances are closed, right, so minimum maintenance standards doesn't apply. It classifies highways on a class system from one to six, class six, essentially there are. So little incidents on class six highways that they actually don't provide many standards for maintenance and potholes and. Sidewalk discontinuaries that. They actually don't really have a standard there, so municipalities are encouraged to come up with a policy that matches with minimum maintenance standards. So you figure out how you're going to deal with class six roads, generally the way to do it is to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it just as if it was a class five road. Which is completely acceptable, these are your, a class six road is a very slow traffic road, so your. Local urban roads that you, you really don't have high speed limits on. The other thing that minimum maintenance standards allows for is significant weather events, so I spoke about our significant weather event. I think this is the second time that we've declared one while I've been director. And what it does is it recognizes that extreme weather can temporarily prevent compliance and it extends the deadlines. For municipalities to go and bring the roads back up into, into a. Standard that meets minimum maintenance standards. So it's, it's a very, very useful tool and the amendments are actually going to expand significant weather statements. To not only encompass winter events, but also things like the flooding that we had. In early March where a road is completely washed out, which is very, very useful. And all of these are very, very useful tools for municipalities, the thing to remember as well though is that it is a minimum standard. So just because this minimum standard is there, it doesn't mean that we're, you know, we're not going to sit there. With a watch and wait till it's forty-eight hours and then go and clear the, clear the sidewalk, you do it. As soon as you can, but it sets a minimum baseline, right, so. You know, what is the, what is the, the absolute minimum that we should be meeting? And then sometimes we can't meet that standard because there is a giant snowstorm and we have to take all our operators off the road and rest them. Because they're, and we're not in compliance with the Highway Traffic Act and we have people driving DZ vehicles who haven't had the adequate rest periods, so. That's why it's important, so another part of this is the. The seasonal roads, so McPhee is a seasonal road. And there's been some suggested by operators around the township, so we actually put, just put up signage. At the, the two ends of Max Corners Road, because even though the snowfall had stopped, we were getting that level of blowing snow. Where we really couldn't push it off with the equipment that we had, we had to wait until the blower was available in Alexandria. Drive that up and then, then push the snow off the road, so. There is a, we can, so seasonal roads are something definitely to look at and that may be a, a tactic. Which I think Jacques was referring to before is to. Work on the priority roads and as you clear a priority road, you know, stick a sign or something like that at the, the lower priority roads. So that people know that they, they aren't going to get hit.
Just a follow-up here.
Yeah, it was not, the road is a primary road I was referring to, so. And it's just like a courtesy to residents that, you know, if, if we know that we won't be able to service roads and I understand completely the. It just made me say, okay, temporary close. Prior to somebody engaging in that road and getting stuck in the middle, two kilometers from the house or something, that, that's just what I meant. It's, I'm not talking about the, the recreation roads or the green roads, whatever, yeah, just making this.
Through Mr. Mayor, it is possible, but it, it's always you have to. It's all a matter of allocating resources, because if you're.
Well, just, I don't know where we would get the manpower once they've already done their minimum maintenance to send them around. But we, I know, but we don't know what the weather's going to be. I think if we're, honestly, for getting that much snow, people shouldn't be on the road, so, you know, that's the bottom line, go ahead, Kermar.
Well, personally, I think Jacques has a point, that the blowing snow was terrible and. I know nobody can do anything about that, but we know that we had roads that were un-travelable. And then we had no way of notifying people not to go there, so Dornley Road was one of them, it's towards the north end of it, it's very wide open there. And there was probably, I don't know, thirty meters of road you couldn't travel, like if you drove into it, you, you weren't getting through. And, and, and that's an area where there's not a lot of houses and, and so, you know, in instances where we know. A car's going to get stuck, I don't know whether or not we can, you know, have an, an emergency plan where some firefighters are available, just to. Stick some cones there and close it up, just, just so that people don't drive into it.
Through Mr. Mayor, so there is, while it's useful during the cleanup period, so once. Once we've actually made significant headway into clearing the roads, it's very useful to be able to stick up signs to say. We haven't been able to get to this road yet, but during the actual significant weather statement. There is a problem with sticking up signs because the, it's, it's essentially back to that main statement, which is. You'll keep it in a state of repair that's reasonable in the circumstances, including the character and location of the highway. If you stick up a sign saying, don't go down this road, the inference is that you are clear to go down, down the other road, right, so. The, there is a buoyant alert system and a Facebook messaging and all of these digital platforms that we use. One of the things that Public Works has been doing recently, which I pass all credit to our communications officer for doing. Is more, there's been more interactions with the businesses around North Glengarry and to be able to get that message out, so. For example, we have our cleanup day coming on May ninth, the Earth Day, so bags are being placed at those businesses. And those relationships are a good way to get that message out as well, if there's a. You know, a notice that can be put up there or communicated with those businesses, so they know that, you know, someone comes into their grocery, into their grocery store and. You know, covered in snow and they're like, wow, the weather's bad out there, I'm like, yeah, they issued a significant weather statement, you probably shouldn't be on the road right now. That's the, the sort of thing, but, and signs declaring a, a special weather statement are also a really good idea. A lot of the cities use digital billboards to be, to be able to display those types of message, messages. Unfortunately, the issue is, once you get into a significant weather statement, your resources are dedicated to plowing, you know. I was out myself picking up garbage before that storm, because I knew I couldn't even, I couldn't pull a guy because he was resting. To be able to go out plowing, so. It's, it's definitely a good idea and trying to get those, those, we definitely saw an issue with getting that message out, that there's a significant weather statement in an event, in, in effect. And we are seeing more of an uptick of people taking on the buoyant alert and, you know, paying attention to the social media messages. So, yeah, it's, I think we integrate all of those, all of those and try a shotgun approach to try and just get that message out there, so people know that. When that significant weather statement's out there. You know, citizens are encouraged to stay off the roads, stay home, avoid unnecessary travel, because you're. Once you, once you go out in those conditions, a lot of your, you know. Protections are removed, right, because we aren't guaranteeing a minimum maintenance level during those, during those times.
But, you know, sarcastically, they're not really, you know, given those warnings, you know, by, you know, weather forecasts and, you know. Anytime we get over ten centimeters of snow, it's, it's, it's snowmageddon, so, you know, people that, they're going to go out, they're just, it doesn't matter what we tell them, unfortunately. Okay, we're going to wrap this up quickly, so.
Yes, sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just, you know, Kermar mentioned firemen, there could be a fire down a road that is completely blocked. And they'll engage in that road, get stuck and all kinds of crap and. And they know that there's a significant snow event, it doesn't prevent them, doesn't prevent them from having to go there, so, but we'll talk about that later, we'll, we'll discuss it.
I guess just my answer to that is putting a pylon at the end of the road, they're going to get there and go, oh, jeez, we can't go down this road.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, so just a few things to close off. Through you, so just a few things to close off. So one is coordination with emergency personnel. So we do coordinate during those times with the fire department and the paramedics, so, and the police, I guess, actually. And so we do have, you know, one operator, like, so we can actually exceed our, you know, our driving hours if it's for an emergency purpose. So, you know, we do have a plan in place, so if there is a call, and it's during a significant weather event, the plow goes and meets that emergency vehicle and takes them to where they need to go. So that is accounted for. And really, that's, that's the chunk of, of the minimum maintenance standards. So it is based on meeting, it, it, it's not prescriptive of, you must send a plow down with shooting this much salt out the back. It's, it's results-based. So you go out and you say, okay, you measured it, the road is in this condition, now we have to do potholes, or, or, that's what the minimum maintenance standards are. The way that it's actually done is, we go and we go and do potholes as soon as we see that there's an issue, and as soon as stuff allows for it. But it lets you prioritize, because if you see that you have stuff that doesn't meet minimum maintenance standards, that gets the hash fault before anything else. And so the reports that you'll see after this is, one, to just adopt minimum maintenance standards as our general standard, and to repeal, we have a policy, a winter maintenance policy out at the moment, so we'll be bringing a report to adopt minimum maintenance standards and to repeal that. The reason is, is that it, it confuses the legal defense, right? So it's much better to just have the minimum maintenance standards, and then if you develop any policies, like a winter maintenance policy, it should be the winter, the winter, the winter maintenance policy in addition to MMS, a literal statement like that, like most of the state, most of the municipalities have. And the last one will be a bylaw to close our unopened road allowances, to remove that ambiguity on whether a, an opened road allowance is opened or closed, because a, you know, a lawyer can go through and try and find a loophole to find that actually there was a survey done in X, 19, whatever, 1941, and so this is actually an opened highway or something like that. So it's a lot cleaner if we just close those and signpost them as well, that they're unopened. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments on minimum maintenance standards? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. So we're going, items under the consent agenda, Council Madden?
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Martin, that the committee of the, committee members for the committee of the whole township of North Glengarry received the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Anything under the consent agenda? All those in favor? Motion is carried. We'll go quickly through the matters of standing committees. Council Massey, anything new at Raisin Regent?
We just went through our strategic planning session two, and we'll be coming out with new plans. We had the ten jobs, so be able to much, much, spend, I think, 25 years, 30 years since we left, so it's, thanks to the comments from the surveys we sent out on Facebook and municipal.
Okay, good. Also, we just got notification, May 2nd, between four and six at the Island Park, they'll be handing out trees, so if any of us are available, I will be there, but anybody else that it's available, it'd be great. Maxwell Manor update, Council Martin?
Yeah, we just, we just finished up our strategic plan and, and the vision, and we've broken into, the board of directors have broken into five subcommittees, just kind of keep track, keep the strategic plan on track. We fired a new assistant director of care, and by all accounts, you're doing an excellent job so far. And as far as the build, the plan is still for May 15th, although I guess we have to push the, the ministry to allow for an early start, because if we go too long into the season and into winter, it's going to cost a significant amount more. So we're still, the last I heard in our meeting on Wednesday, we're still pushing for a May 15 shovel in the grounds. And for fundraising, a roast and toast of Eric Metcalf goes on this Friday, and Catch the Eight will have $330,000 major jackpot, so get your tickets.
Yeah, and at the, for our funding update, we had a meeting of the fundraising committee this morning, and we are currently at $9,562,000 of our 11 million, so we're getting there. Pioneer Museum update?
Pioneer Museum, I attended the AGM with the mayor on April 11th, and there was a nice presentation by Mackie Robertson. He did a number of house histories in the area, houses from the 1800s and early 1900s, how they've been restored and, and updated. The Madden House was one of them, and it was an excellent presentation, it was pretty good. For fundraising, they're doing a paint party on May, May 1st, if anybody's interested, you could check their website. And Saturday, May 3rd, they're doing their spring cleanup to get ready for a very busy season. And as well, you may be interested in the Glengarry Rambles, doing four of them this year, May 24th, 25th, and June, May 31st, June 1st. Check out their website.
Excellent. I paint as well as I do karaoke, so I'll pass. Easy.
I love your signatures.
Oh, thank, thank you. Jacques, do you have anything else to say about the minimum maintenance standards? Okay, Glengarry Archives update, we haven't had a meeting in over three months, so we're due for a meeting. Alan was away on vacation, and his brother had passed away, so we'll be meeting probably in the next few weeks. Arts, Culture and Heritage, Jeff?
We've got a theme CIP application coming forward, and we're looking at a mural partnering with local schools to create a biennial mural, so we're going to be discussing that maybe, maybe, our first meeting, first Monday.
Excellent. County Council update, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just quickly, two interesting pieces. The SDG Counties and Cornwall Tourism Strategic Plan was unveiled at a Monday meeting, and it looks like a very well-done strategic plan. The, the good news, as far as I'm concerned, I think the mayor would agree, is Cornwall and SDG are partner, and, is it Aquosac?
Aquosac.
Are, are partnering and collaborating on tourism, to make it truly regional tourism, which is, which is really the way to go.
There was a separation a few years ago, when we went away from the...
Yeah, so the plan looks like a really good one, and regional tourism's the way to go. And similarly, the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, I don't know if you recognize that, it's been, it's been, it's legislated by the province that every municipality have one of these things. Several years ago, back in 2019, something like that, the Social Development Council took, took it on, on behalf of both SDG, which includes the six municipalities, and the city of Cornwall, and they managed the Community and Safety Well-Being Plan on behalf of the municipalities. So what is happening now is that SDG and Cornwall have decided to take that plan back in-house, and it'll be managed by the Human Services Department out of Cornwall, but it will make it more of a municipal plan, which is what we need it to be. And the municipalities, we've made sure, we talked about it at the meeting, that the municipalities will be consulted, and will be involved in, in the process of rewriting this plan. And it's going to be, again, a regional plan, which is good. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Friends of the Trails?
So we had a meeting, that's actually in light, Richard had passed away. So we had that meeting, and it was to discuss a sort of strategic plan for, for the Trails. The Trails were very, what came out of that meeting was, the Trails were very happy with the support they're getting from the Glengarry Township, through both the planning and the roads and that kind of thing in our land, and through other funding that we afforded them, so.
Okay, thank you. Community Development Committee, so we met, most of the discussion surrounded the money that we just got from the province, and, you know, timelines for that kind of thing, discussing the developments that are happening within the municipality. And I think next, we want to kind of have conversations on how we're going to, you know, through economic development, and how, you know, how we're going to bring the people in to, you know, fill these, these homes, and what can we do, and, you know, definitely concentrating on keeping what we have now as far as our industry that we have. So we, we'll be meeting again, I believe, next month, or to, to, once again, hammer down on some of those issues. Rural Affairs, Council Kedell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not too much to report. Farmers have been winterized for a while, but they're sure at it now, you know, they're out disking and planting, well, not planting, but fertilizing and working like crazy. Our next meeting is June 27th at 6:30.
Okay, thank you. Notice a motion, next committee of the whole, Wednesday, July 23rd, 3:00 PM here, motion to adjourn. Council Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. There be no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at 5:58 PM.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, we'll quickly go into this meeting of planning. What? Yes. So this is a, a special meeting of the council agenda for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. I will call the meeting to order. Declarations of pecuniary interest, I have a declaration, date today, June 23rd, 2025. IGM Don declare a pecuniary interest with item 6A, I, for the following reasons, owner of the land is one of my clients. I will pass the meeting over to the Deputy Mayor and Big Eight.
Oh, shock. I guess he's leaving. I guess so.
See ya.
All right, now, now we can get business done. Okay, so accept the agenda, please, Councilor Martin.
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the special meeting of council on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Carried. We don't have any previous minutes, no delegations, number six staff reports, building, planning and bylaw department. What's BP stand for? Anyway, BP 2025-11, bylaw number 13, exemption from part lot control. Councilor Kedell, please.
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Council Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report BP 2025-11, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts part lot control bylaw number 13-2025, and that bylaw 13-2025 be read first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 23rd day of April 2025.
Thank you, Councilor Kedell. So go ahead, Jacob, and you can probably make this quick, because this is going to be one of those delegated authority ones.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So, yeah, this is one of the ones we're trying to expedite. Basically, this is a part lot control bylaw, as I explained before, it's the split semi-detaches in half. In this case, it's not a semi-detached, but it's exactly the same situation as where two houses were merged together, being 290 and 296 East Boundary Road. So as you can see, they always had two row numbers, but they were pinned together, so technically, one lot. Now the owner wants to sell one of the properties and wants to keep the other one, so exactly like a semi-detached, they want the two houses to be under different entities. So because it's part of a subdivision within the town of Alexandria, we have to pass one of these bylaws to give the permission to separate the two houses. So basically, this bylaw here is simply to remove the part lot control, to be able to separate the lands, and to sell them as two different parcel of lands. So this, yeah, exactly like you said, Mr. Deputy Mayor, this is one that will eventually get the CEO to sign, because now with this bylaw, we simply send it to the counties, they stamp it, register it, and it's a done deal. So it should be pretty easy. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments?
I just have a very simple question. How did they ever get together in the first place?
We, it's the third time I see this here in North Glengarry, because they're not even supposed to be together. It's not permitted to have two houses and, and are one property. But when they were changed to land titles, they were under the exact same name, and they were just merged together, yeah.
So it's not a semi-detached business here?
No, not in this case, no, but it's the same situation as in, you, you can't, you can't sell it, and you can't do a severance, because it's within a subdivision, so you have to do a part lot control.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion? Carried, excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So no one, no other business, no, no question period, no closed session, confirming bylaw. Councilor Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm moved by myself, seconded by Council Madden, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 14-2025, being a bylaw to adopt, ratify, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, and that bylaw 14-2025 be read a first, second, third time, and enacted in open council this 23rd day of April 2025.
Thank you, Councilor, all in favor of the motion? Carried. And Councilor Massey, adjournment, please. Please. All in favor of the motion? Carried, excellent. All right, that concludes the special meeting for this day, and everyone have a good night. Thank you.